Welcome to the Zon Board of April fourth, two thousand twenty-three. My name is Matty Akins. I'm the chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman. Mr. Rahel, Mr. Hemmle, Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien, the director of inspectional services. Uh, Mr. Conlon, uh, Clark, Ms. Newman, and we'll go right into it tonight. Uh, new business, case number, huh? Twenty-two sixty-nine Marcus Morales, for various to construct the second floor rear addition on the premise number fourteen Nelson Street. The absentee representative there.
How do you want to like people?
If anyone's gonna testify tonight, I think he might testify, please raise your right hand, stand up and raise your right hand if you could. If anyone's gonna testify tonight, if you don't take an oath, you're not gonna testify.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth from the man out here.
Well, why don't you tell what you wanna do in your file?
Uh, so my wife and I are looking to build a.
Name and address for the record.
Uh, Marcus Morales, fourteen Nelson Street.
Yep.
Number one six nine.
Yep.
Uh, we moved here in twenty eighteen, um, from Boston. Uh, and we now have two young children and, um, we're looking to build an addition on the rear of our property. It's a two-family residence that, um, came equipped with a very small studio apartment. Um, that I'd like to upgrade into a nicer, above-ground, it's currently a garden-level apartment. So I'd like to end up with a, a two-bedroom rental unit and then maintain the four-bedroom home for us. Um, and be taking off a old garage on the front of the house.
Right.
And, um, and building a new facility.
So when you done, you have four spaces out front?
Four parking spaces, um, for the rental unit for us.
Okay.
And, um, and that's everything.
Kind of, I, I mean, the, the shape of that, um.
Yeah, the lot is very narrow and long.
Long and down.
Yeah, so where's the.
Could be across that, there of course.
We're looking at, we need a clean and safe on the side, side.
Well, if they, if already they, they just don't spend in the back, you know?
Yeah.
Already known as long, right?
Yeah.
All right. I have no questions, anyone?
I have no questions. That's the other question.
Good thoughts this time. Is there anything? You can have a seat. Does anyone wanna speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor first of all? Second call. Third call opposed. Got a letter here from, um, DPW, we reviewed the above-represented project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed during the side of? Please step forward, state name and address for record, please.
I don't think that's what they said, they're going to not add any addition. I mean, why the hot, the number twelve Nelson Street, like next door. Uh, I have a few, uh, complaints about what he wants to do.
Okay.
First of all, we've been living there for four years and the place is a whole, it's a mess.
Yeah.
Uh, I think he wants to build right up to the, um, property line.
Now, what he has is, the way his house is right now, I can show you here, right here, if you wanna come up, I'm gonna show you what you want. His, his, his plot. So. You want, man?
This is how.
Okay. So maybe when you just.
This is, yeah, well, here we go.
I'm gonna say next day or about.
Yeah.
Keep going, hold on.
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, well, but what he's doing, he hears himself, he's taking the front of that off, that whole variety, that whole section, you know, right? He don't look like, oh, that's where the hot.
There's only, yeah, there's only room for punch.
No, those are gonna be gone.
Yeah.
Six, no, there isn't. There's enough room.
Yeah, there's, yeah, twelve feet, I mean, eighteen feet, like that.
Yeah. What's, no, it's like.
Yeah, I'm sure you got twenty.
Now, his, he's that.
He's got four cars now already.
Um, you can only, you've got two spaces for him and for his family, sure, that's what he's gonna have to do. He's getting. That's the addition he put on. So these are already, he just extended his house back twenty feet.
So this addition will be as high as.
Correct.
Maybe thirty-two feet.
He told me, he told me six months ago.
Well, this is twenty-five.
No, that's.
That's the width.
Okay.
That's the width of the house.
And he's not building up right up against.
No.
Okay.
But isn't there a lot that says you have to be five to ten feet away from the.
Thirteen, thirteen.
Thirteen feet.
But it's extended, no, this is all non-conformant, it's already there.
Yes.
You just go and straight.
You can do that.
No, you can do that. You can, you can take the house, you go straight and straight line, you can't move out, you can't move, you can move in.
Well, he's talking, well, he's talking about.
No, no, he's not, no, he's not. Here's the thing, when he gets a permit, this is what has to be built, if it isn't, they have to rip it down.
Is there, um, a timeframe on this?
All right, why don't you go back, now you know what that is, let everyone else hear.
Yeah.
Oh, no, you wanna finish? Sir, you have the floor, I'm sorry. I didn't mean, yeah, everyone here.
Yeah, he, um, he has a downfall and decided to house him out, been wanting to use the proper water, waiting to my, uh, onto my property. He, uh, he doesn't seem to finish anything. He's got, uh, a little, a little ago, he took some siding off the back and left the rest of it there. And on a windy day, it came flying across my porch, if I had been out there, it would have taken my head off. So he is a record of not finishing it, and that's why I asked you if there's a time when, when he has to finish this.
He's gotta, he's gotta start it within a year, and, and in a certain timeframe, he should get it built and finished because he's paying. You pay taxes every year, it goes up for four years. If you don't finish, you're being taxed on it, so you might as well do it, finish it.
But is there anybody gonna check to see what he's, if he needs a.
Inspectors go out there all the time and make sure everything's done. I can tell you, Mr. Conlon, would you like to speak about that?
Well, the, all it says, the building code says is the work has to be, uh, ongoing, continuous. If he stops for a length of time, he'd have to come back here, he wouldn't be able to continue. The job has to be.
What's that length of time? What's the length of time?
There's no length of time, sir, it's just as long, as long as the work is ongoing.
As long as he's keep working at it, you're saying.
Yeah, but if he, if he, if he stops working on it, if they retire.
All, all the buildings are gone. All the buildings are gone, they will be done, they will be done.
Because before he moved in, the, the street was respectable. Ask anybody right by there now, he's got junk out the front, he's got, uh, all kinds of plastic laying around, he's got sheet, sheeting blown out the house. It's a mess, is this new piece gonna be like that?
Um, I would say not, it's very new, I hope he, he would have it built like.
He's got a brand-new shifter on the back, he did about three years ago, and the plastic is all over my face.
So he didn't put nothing on the top of the.
He put no siding on it, no, he put shit, the wallpaper on it, but no shingles.
Like the siding in the front?
Yeah, the front.
Like the front of the house?
Yeah. He's had a porch about three, four years, he was never finished it. And the plastic is flown all over, I think of a piece of plastic off my yard today that he blew off his house.
You put it on the front door front. Huh?
And a lot of.
I would give him a, I would give him a present. Thank you. Anyone else? Last call, all the party here close to the, um. Yeah, the applicant, please come up. Is the applicant still here?
Mr. Morales, yeah.
Please step forward. A lot of accusations by a lot of people in the neighborhood saying you're not keeping your house clean. I drove up there a few years ago on another project, and it's the same way it was when I drove by it then. So here's what we're gonna do, and I'd like the board to do, and we'll talk about it. You're gonna clean your place up for us. Clean it all up, and come back here and see us, if there goes an agreement, let's, let's do it a month, get his place all cleaned up, and we'll take a ride by there. If it's not cleaned up enough, then we'll wait another month. We'll just put it off, cause enough's enough. I mean, we had this before up in, up the walls, you know, they got, who was it not, the guy had bores, ties. Probably took him three months to clean it up, well, we didn't let him build anything for three months, so, up to him, clean it up. You know, it's an eyesore, and it's, and you shouldn't be doing that, you shouldn't be doing that to your neighbors, you really shouldn't. Uh, so, we'll make a decision, you can sit here and wait. Thanks, guys, what do you think?
Yeah, give him a month for the bad side.
Yeah, okay, it's been like that because we've had a couple other projects that were built up there, it's been the same like that for years. I know he bought it like that probably, but. He didn't do nothing to fix it up.
Another question, does he understand what this board means by cleaned up?
Yeah.
To what degree are you talking about cleaning it up, are you talking about anything specific on the property?
Well, I wanted the yard all cleaned up, I like the front, any paper that's hanging and blowing all over the place, pack back down, yeah, it's coming down, but pack it back out, and issue it before it's ripped down, before he gets a permit, I mean, I think you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, do you understand what we're saying? We want the yard cleaned, like, like it needs.
I've, I've done a lot of work to prepare for this project, I had done some work on the ground of the house.
Yeah.
And make it functional for us when we move in.
Yeah.
It was in very bad shape when we purchased it.
Yeah.
And the interior was.
Please let him speak.
Um, I, I appreciate that things have gotten a bit out of control. We have two very small children.
I get it.
It's been very hard to try to build ourselves a life and be a part of that community. We're nothing but kind to our neighbors.
Yeah.
And I've spoken about this project with Michael personally.
Yep.
So I, I hope that they can have faith that we are doing the best we can as a young couple, trying to build our family and our life, and that. It's, everything takes some time, and I stopped working on things because. The, uh, front of the house is non-informing and trying to, uh, fix it up the way that I was.
Yes.
Became a problem with the building department, so we started planning this larger project that.
I have one more question.
Take care of.
Who's gonna do the work?
Uh, I'm a licensed contractor, um, I was gonna do the work myself, um, and.
Small or large license, you have a large license or small license?
I, I have a hundred and thirty license.
Uh, I guess he has it, I haven't been, I just started getting it done, I get it cleaned up, but, um, so. So, you think you can do that in a month?
Yeah, if I can clean out my yard.
All right, all right, Steve?
Can I say something?
Uh, no, no, huh? May ninth, how's that work?
May ninth?
Yeah. I have a motion question.
Mr. Chairman, CBA twenty-two sixty-nine Marcus Morales for our various to construct the second floor rear addition on the premise number fourteen Nelson Street Quincy and make a motion to move that to May ninth. So I could.
On the motion, saying that I want a favor?
I agree.
Both, someone. Anyone that wants to come here May ninth, if you're a bud on, and it's not going right, please let us know, but we're gonna go up there and look at the property. President of tonight's agenda, CBA twenty-three thirteen. Nick Wilson for Vanis, that first floor bedroom and bathroom, handicap ramp and a new doorway on the premises one twenty-four May flower road, the absentee representative there. Name and address for record.
Nick Wilson, one twenty-four May flower road.
So what do you want to do?
Uh, we have a disabled five-year-old daughter, um, that's currently living on the second floor, um, she's getting bigger, so we're looking to add a first-floor bedroom and bathroom, add the handicap ramp, and just extend the driveway out a little bit, uh, so that when you get a handicap accessible vehicle, uh, it's easier to transport her in and out.
Now, look at your plan, so you, so you're gonna have a walk-down set of stairs now going into the, the bulkhead.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, we're gonna extend the basement out to the same footprint of, uh, that first, just that first.
That's fine, all right, and then you have a walk-down set of stairs, and then you come out of, you keep from the property, or something like that?
I think it's ten, but yeah.
Something like that, yeah, I just went down and walked it, I'm just trying to see what you have inside there, I know you're close, but. Uh, and the ramp, so you're putting in a double, you'll be putting in a double slide up?
Yeah, on that part of the house right there, the ramp will come right from the driveway, um, right after that.
Very good. Any questions?
I'm not, no questions.
Okay, you can have a seat. Is there anyone wanna speak in favor? Name and address, please.
Debbie Riley, nine Land Green Street, um, they're jolly to my neighbors, and, um, I know they're girls, I know that it's a great opportunity to keep them in the neighborhood, it's obviously, um, a challenging situation for them to, how to accommodate, so I think that's a great opportunity to keep them in, while they can accommodate their needs.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, like speaking favor? Second call, last call, all the party here in close. Got a letter here from the DPW, they reviewed your buck project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. I know he's cutting on that side and coming across, but the circumstances he's, he's living under right now is. Uh, I know it's not making an apartment, because it is, you gotta go in the kitchen and around, put into the room, so, with the door there, you know, it's just locked on, so, but I'll keep on.
I'm a favor, is favor.
Well, likewise. I have a motion question.
Mr. Chairman, CBA twenty-two to F one-three Nick Wilson for a various to have a first-floor bedroom and a bathroom, handicap ramp, ramp and a new doorway on the premise number one twenty-four May flower road Quincy, make a motion to grant the various. So.
For a motion, saying that I want a favor?
I agree.
Close.
Thank you.
President of, Mr. CBA twenty-three fourteen JCB Architect of Vanis, that's the premise left lane, and construct a three-and-a-half story single-family home, where they moved that from a vacant lot in front of C four post town road, the absentee representative there. No one here? Yep, we have. Close, aye? You have the floor, tell us who you want to.
There was an existing home that was destroyed during the hurricane from 2018, not second. We pulled a building permit, took that home down, documented that the home had it registered with the 44th County Registry and deeds with our attorney. And since that house was about 1,700 square feet and it readily encroached on the neighbors' properties. We spoke to all the neighbors. Everybody's in favor to move the house forward on the property lot, build approximately 2,500 square foot house. Uh, three-story high, nice deck outside, built a real good quality house, and one of the neighbors came to rent it today.
You got a roof deck, it's like five feet, right? It's a, it's a roof deck house. That's what, five feet, high end, true?
No, we took that, we took that all out. The house is gonna be up every place.
Okay, that was my question. The one I have here says, they're eating, they're gonna have five.
I've already come and claimed, we may help you open one.
We do. I don't have a, no one, I don't think too bad of anyone we get. Yeah. Where we move?
Uh, yeah.
No, and then they got the.
Yeah, the stand-up house.
Yeah, the stand-up house.
Is that the, is that the motion, recent?
No.
Okay.
When did you change these?
About two weeks ago.
Did you think to call the department, so we have time to review?
We hired, we hired them to take care of this, so. It's 28th, speak at all.
Hire who?
The J, the, uh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's not here with you, then?
They did, they told, they told me I didn't even need to bespeak.
So you told him to fire, could you fire him?
I told him that three times already. Everything's taking so long, man.
He still comes back. Great for the check.
So this is just gonna be access stairs. This is just gonna be access, this is 15 foot by 15 foot. And I have my soul hanging in the garage just.
Now, I think stories nine to 10 feet. Nine, nine feet? Would you get 10 feet, 10 feet three between floors?
That's a trim in room choice. Yeah, nine foot.
First floor, left, right, left. Right?
Yeah.
Then you go up, go up 10 feet, 10 feet three, it's not, I don't read them. It just, I, I just didn't know what, I'm asking, how high is, you know?
Thirty-five feet's the total.
Sorry, hold on, how high for the ceiling each floor?
Nine feet.
That's, oh yeah, in the beginning, thank you. No, no. But I was looking at that and it seemed right.
Cause you mentioned from hands to the top.
No, no, you're saying, no, no, fourth floor, it's like 10 three. I don't know if we're missing three, somewhere three, three, six, nine, I don't know, foots.
So this is where the previous house was here.
Yep.
On the lot, which was real tight to bobs here.
So, so this fence, that fence is in your property, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the shit. So you got what you do?
This is Ger- Jeremy's home. I was with him today together. We did pull the permit correct to take this property down and had it closed up, to build an apartment.
You can go back up there and let us just take these plans, that would be nice. If anyone wants to look at what you're doing, just take in that. Pop that doorway out.
Same plan, you have.
Same thing, just.
Same one, we have the updated one.
They just kinda have an access.
You have the updated one, so.
It's coming from the deck.
Before it had the, the previous plan had a full wall off there, but it's just, it's just a spare access.
Any questions, the applicant?
How does this study?
Did everyone kinda hear what we're talking about up there, the mics? No?
Yeah.
It's a little better.
Oh, alright. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call?
I'm in the one, Post Island.
Just name and address for the record.
When the priority, 76, Post Island.
Thank you, Linda.
Yes, I have no problem. He's way behind you.
Okay.
Are you the white house, the blue?
I'm the yellow.
Is that Fredo? Which one's the first one you're going to ask, yeah, yellow?
Well, he's like.
Cross the street.
Oh, you're across the street from me?
I'm 76, Post Island. He's like two houses.
Oh, okay, I knew, I knew we.
To the side, you know.
Alright.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wanna speak in favor? Third call, counsel.
Evening, guys. Dave McAdams, 41, counsel, 48, but he wrote, definitely in favor of the, the Post Island construction. You know, a lot of houses got repaired down there in a similar way that Chris is gonna do this one, then that empty lot, it'll look nice next to that. That blue one that we approved not too long ago with the carriage house. Chris has also been on C Street for a number of years, so he knows the area and does good work, so.
Yeah, that carriage house come on nice.
Yeah, yeah, full support. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Wettigan from the DPW, reading the record.
March 13, 2023. We reviewed the supplemental for the above referenced project, then our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage, and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, will there be any fill or change of grade due to the development? Five, the submittal package should generally provide a plan noting the proposed erosion and sediment control practices to be implemented during the construction phase of the project to protect resource area. Six, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site faculties and right-of-way need to be submitted along with a digital file. If further information is required, please divide.
Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call, Wettigan?
This is from, do we have an address? It doesn't say which house they are.
Said it's too big of a house to fit and pee on the, uh. In the little houses that are there. You know, sometimes I'd be so west, not gonna pee on anyone that side. And then when, when the sun comes out, it's gonna spread. Anyone's gonna pee, it's a house that was just built here. In the morning, early morning, 10 o'clock, that's about it.
No address.
No, no address. Let's go ahead and sign it, we don't need an address.
I'm looking for a hole.
Yeah. All of our party here in close. When I first, when I first looked at that lot years ago, I thought I was gonna try to go further down. Glad that's still all the way back, leaving that whole, that finale, there's a little house, you can still get a piece of something there. It's not gonna be, you know, maybe it is. And we say, could, we could have planned something down there, put a parking down there, hate it, but it is. How many are we on there?
On my favor, is favor.
Just wanted to make a comment, so Jake's, Jake's, you see, now, in the world, do you have a question for them?
Oh.
I wanna make sure that the vote is on the new drawn, it's not the traditional forms of the, which call the third one.
There's five feet, right? Put that in there, four, five feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I step forward, please?
JCBT?
No, not you. Is, isn't he a contractor up there?
I guess.
What happened? No, but I'm wanting to know what happened with plans. Two weeks ago, he changed his plans, correct?
Yes.
How come you didn't let, let us know?
We did, we submitted.
Those are, those are the same ones you have.
No, he didn't, because he still had the.
No, it's just a, it's just a.
It's just a top.
It's just a top.
We eliminate, we eliminate the attic and it was, we submitted. And the plan that was submitted, the shrinks should be the.
What did I have by now? They, they.
It's the same ones you have.
Yeah, the only thing that did change.
Eight goes to 35 instead of 39.
What you have, say 35.
No, it said 39, right? Yeah, three.
They don't have.
We eliminate the attic and just walk upstairs, go up to the, with that.
I know exactly what he did.
That still says 39.
See, I'm looking at.
But the plans say 35.
I thought it was clear.
I could not, I could not modify.
They're doing like 39, five.
I could not modify what was originally put in, so I request the ISD to modify that for me. That's in the computer, I could not.
Alright, thank you.
We'll start by that.
You know, a big difference from that, you got a real bad, bad feeling when you, when you look at that. I do.
I apologize.
For, for the neighbors, and then all of a sudden, I'm like, why didn't somebody even build one? I don't know. I guess that's why we're here, huh? You know, sir?
Sir.
O'Brien, in? Can I watch him, please?
Mr. Chairman, CBA 23-14, JCBT Architect for a variance, special permit floodplain to construct a three-story, single-family home of a roof deck on a vacant lot on premise number 84, Post Island Road, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the variance, special permit floodplain with a max height of 35 feet.
Second.
On the motion, standing in all favor?
Aye.
Aye, close, no more. Brotherman of tonight's agenda, CBA 2315, JBC Architect for a variance to convert the existing single-family home to a two-family home. Construction is on the side of the Congress, now 34, 33, not sent to last. The applicant representative here?
Yes.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name's Bonnie Tam with JCBT.
Yep, sorry, do you have the floor? What are you on here?
Uh, my client is seeking to put an addition, conversion to an existing single-family to a two-family with side addition. Two-and-a-half story with ground floor and level two car garage. Second floor bedrooms. Combining four parking spaces, two indoor, two outdoor. The proposed, the existing single-family remains the same. The proposed addition will have two-bedroom, kitchen on the second floor. Attic will be finished for playroom.
And that's an angled attic, so it goes three, five, seven up, so the middle is where, well.
Yeah, just like a townhouse style, side by side. Yep, seeking for variance on FAR, minimum lot area for drawing and stuff like.
What? I, I, I thought it was a nice project myself when I looked at it at first, thinking this isn't gonna work out. But I even realized the layout that they had there was really pretty good. But it's, I have two questions. On your, on your. You continue right down, you follow the house line straight. On your corner, you go in, like the other pot sticks out of the other house, and you have that window pot sticks out of this side house, so you're going in a little on your side.
Yes.
Yeah, when I read the thing there, it says that your numbers are going down. I don't know what happened. I gotta type over, uh.
Numbers went down?
Yeah, like, like, uh. The left, side left goes from 14, five to 10, is that, is that because of the set of stairs? You wanna connect the picture of what you wrote there. Is that because of this set of stairs here coming down?
Oh, this is the existing.
No, that's all right there.
Left side.
The other side's going down. No, go down, look, go down.
Middle, 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 yeah, right there.
This is just the stairs, the steps at the door.
Right, but, but is that where that, you got 14, 11, you keep in the same line, yet you're losing three, four feet? Is that the stairs?
Just for the stairs.
That's all right. I didn't know. I missed something or someone took it right or. I have no questions about it. I think the layout, you did a great job. I know it's, I know it's a tight neighborhood over there, but they need to park it for the people, you did it right.
I have, uh, no questions about this.
No questions.
Just the, the unit above the garage will be the second unit.
Yes.
Uh, from top to bottom.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, yeah, and the existing single-family, the, this is the, this is the existing sing- single-family, no change.
Okay.
No worries, yeah.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you have, do you want to speak in favor? I'm gonna be careful, the microphone's right there on the side. Is there anyone who likes to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? All of our party here in close, they're gonna let it get from the DPW.
Letter dated March 13, 2023. We have reviewed the supplemental for the above referenced project, then our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Two, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Three, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Four, will there be any fill or change of grade due to the development? Five, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file.
So that file is here, it's closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call closed. Wow, what? I like it. I think, I think they do.
I like the off-street parking. Uh, I like that it wasn't too much.
Small.
Yeah. How off-street parking looks nice, we can do that. Favor.
Your question, please.
Mr. Chairman, CBA 23-15, JCBT Architect for a variance to convert the existing single-family home to a two-family home and construct a side addition on the premise number 33, North Central Ave, Quincy. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion? Standing in all favor?
Aye.
Close, no more.
Thank you.
That's for your pride, mine. I don't know if you wanted the full plans. Those are the same ones, yeah.
Did she have, did you have? Can I see that set of plans? We're gonna keep, cause I don't know if we know that.
We need to, yeah.
Alright. You need help, help.
I did.
No, you need a help.
Oh, yeah.
You do. CBA 2315, Jonathan Sulphirstein, fire. For administrative appeal and the issuance of a permit to allow the construction in addition to extensive renovations to the existing dwelling on the premises number 15, Duick Street, Quincy. The applicant representative here, counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jonathan Sulphirstein. I am here representing the neighbors directly across the street to the property, David DeBonen, Rachel Wilson. Uh, I have submitted some materials in support of this administrative appeal. I did submit another, uh, letter, an opinion of an engineer earlier today by email. But Ms. Newman suggested I bring hard copies to the board, which I have here.
Thank you.
I got six copies.
Oh, is there an extra one there?
I have.
Could you public school, sir?
Alright, um. The board may well remember this property from a hearing last year, uh, where the property owner was seeking zoning relief to construct essentially the exact same structure, just on another large lot. Now, in what I would call a bit of a shell game, the structure's just been moved over next to the existing structure. With a claim that it's gonna remain a two-family, just two very large units. With two second-story living rooms in a clue, in, in addition to the first-story living room. And, uh, in that, this proposal should now require rezoning relief. Uh, and a building permit was issued for that. And, uh, I would argue that the building permit was issued in error for several reasons. First of all, uh, the ordinance clearly requires a special permit for any addition that. First of all, uh, the ordinance clearly requires a special permit for any addition that, uh, is above twenty-five percent increase in ground coverage. So, uh, the applicant tries to get around this by suggesting that ground coverage only includes appears that the house is sitting on, and not the house itself, which is a larger footprint than the existing house. The term ground coverage isn't defined in the ordinance, but, uh, there, the closest definition with the building coverage, clearly the same concept, and that clearly includes the floor area of the lower floors. Uh, and by that definition, this would be a hundred and six percent increase, and clearly require a special permit under Floodplane Protection District ordinance. In addition, uh, and I, I don't know how to characterize the estimated cost, other than absurd. Um, the stated replacement cost in, for the existing structure, uh, set forth on the assessment field card is half a million dollars. And yet, they're saying they're gonna build a larger structure, newer structure, on a very expensive raised foundation for about a quarter of that, or a third of that. Um, why would they underestimate that? Well, for one thing, the city got a much lower building proof fee, and I would think that everyone would be upset about that. But more importantly, what's the magic of staying under fifty percent of, um, estimated, uh, cost? It doesn't constitute a substantial improvement, either under the ordinance or under the state building code, which would trigger a requirement to raise the lowest level of the existing structure. Now, that may not be the case under the building code if there were no improvements taking place to the existing structure. But we know there are improvements taking place to the existing structure. They're gonna be removing siding, vents, electrical service, windows, they're gonna be, um, re- demolishing an internal staircase, they're gonna be demolishing supposedly an internal kitchen. They're gonna be doing all sorts of work to the existing structure, and that then requires that the entire first floor, being the basement, be raised above, uh, the floodplain. Um, and that alone is gonna jack the price way up as well. We also have no idea about zoning compliance, because there was no site plan submitted. What we do know is that best-case scenario for them, what they show is that they are thirty-six square feet away from exceeding F A R. Now that, when I say best-case scenario, that's when I just add up, quote-unquote, livable area on the assessment field code, which very likely doesn't account for the fact that there's gonna be an internal staircase removed, adding livable area. Uh, and livable area also doesn't include, um, the entryway. Uh, and so, it doesn't take a lot of area to get up over thirty-six square feet. And I would submit that at a minimum, there should be a stamped engineer plan stating what the F A R is gonna be for this addition, when they come back for the special permit, that's clearly required under the ordinance. We also don't know for sure what other violations there might be, setback or what, what have you, because we, again, we have no set, no, uh, site plan. Uh, there are a lot of other problems with this, but I, I feel like there's really not much more that needs to be said about this. This board was so clear in rejecting the exact same proposal, just set off from the existing house, a few feet. And by the way, the police raids continue, there was one a month ago. So, I don't know why there would be such an urge or desire to help this particular property owner get around the requirements of the law. And I would ask the board to overturn the issuance of the building permit, and require that new plans be submitted with a special permit application, different lack of the ordinance. Then I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I got a million of them, really. Here's what I'm, and, and you know how we vote in the law. It's like, guy's been sitting here twenty-something years, knows the building codes ten times better than I do. And whatever that person did, I, I'll swear on my mother's grave that Mr. Dukey did not do nothing and make this happen. He's, he's not that guy, I know. But whatever this person did, and whoever they hired to, to get around this law, I think really should be in the court of law, that's what I believe. I believe this should be going to Land Court, uh, in those decisions. We, we had a guy that's been here for twenty years, and knows, like I said, the law probably better than anyone here sitting at this table. And I don't even know, uh, Mr. Carlin, I'm gonna ask for his response on this, because I wanna hear his response. These guys have been in this business a long time, they should know the rules. Whoever got around those rules, maybe they're gonna start looking at zoning and tightening up all these things, or not, maybe should be, could be, this is in here and those, it's not right, it's not right, spot on, and all that other stuff that, you know, they're trying to just... We, we gotta do something with zoning, we really, and you're right. I, I agree, there's a lot of things, but the laws are the law, the laws are above me, so I don't have any questions. I, I tried to figure this out myself. And I know Mr. Dukey, and I swear it was honesty, they come in with the paperwork, and he gave them a permit. And someone pretty smart out there figured it out, because they knew where we were coming from. So, that's, that's mine on, I don't know if anyone has any questions, Fox? You know, a lawyer right here, Mr. Chin?
Of course. Uh, section eight-one-five there, you put, uh, F D W proposed construction expansion twenty-five percent of ground average allowed on the eight-one-five-five ads, what, we used that a hundred and six, this is a hundred and eight, is it a hundred and eight?
I'm sorry, I, I must have misspoken, I was going off memory, it's probably a hundred and eight.
But it's a hundred and eight, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's the difference between seventeen sixty, which is the proposed, um, square-footed for, uh, I, I didn't do the calculation of the actual, you know, first-floor area that was the engineer, so I would try that.
So it's a hundred and eight?
I would go with a hundred and eight.
Okay, thank you.
Well, my understanding of, uh, some of the issues is that there's a disparity in terms of how one reads and interprets the, uh, the P O D ordinance. So, I can't question, and say one side's reading is correct, and the other side's reading is incorrect. It's something that I think a judge would, like we sit in the Land Court possibly, might be better able to determine, maybe after taking testimony and so forth. It's difficult for this board to make a decision when interpretation on ordinances is involved.
And I do appreciate that, all, I guess all I'll say is, unfortunately, that's why they pay you guys the big bucks, that's what the statute, that the statute says this board has to make that determination in the first instance. Um, and I, I would just come back to all of the term, all of the rules of statutory construction that apply to ordinances, um, say that you use common sense. First and foremost, you use common sense, and you, you, you look at the intent of the ordinance, and you look at similar definitions. And so, common sense, what, what common sense does it make to say, to have a twenty-five percent, uh, trigger for a special permit, but say, yeah, just lift it up a foot, and you're fine? And that doesn't apply, and you can cover the entire property without getting a special permit. You're still creating, dramatically changing runoff and flood control, you're still putting your foot in that puddle, and pushing all the water everywhere else, even if you don't put it all the way down to the floor? So, a- and you have a very similar term in the ordinance that is defined. And I cited case law of Nantucket, it defines the exact term as the first floor area. So there's nothing, there's nothing out there that would support the notion that you don't look at the first floor area, and there are a lot of things that would support the notion that you do. Um, first and foremost, the purpose of your ordinance. So I, I, I completely understand how you feel about that, and I guess I would just say, unfortunately, uh, the law looks to this board to make that determination. Um, and, and, you know, I, I've been doing this a long time too, my partner wrote the ordinance. Um, I understand the reluctance, and at the same time, I, I would urge the board to apply common sense, to apply the definition that is in the file op, in the ordinance, and, um, and ask you to refer to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Carlin?
Yep.
You had a letter here, and you wanna read it into the record for dispute?
You have.
Yeah, everyone have this, if you go up there, please, you need it. You need this one?
Yep.
One thing to say, before J Duke, before we're...
Why not?
The Director of Special Services. Dear Zoners of the Better, please consider the following responsive to the appeal of the Bill of Credit B twenty-three, twenty-four, that I issued on January twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, to the addition to the existing two-family structure at fifteen Dewey Street. The appeal of this several self, opinions are responded each one separately. I will include a list of records, documents for your convenience. Exhibit one is the one from Quincy in there, which is going into the record. Exhibit two is the site plan by the self-protected June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, revised August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And exhibit three is the elevation certificate by Frank Gallagher, dated January eighteen, two thousand twenty-three. The Act will use the term building coverage of ground coverage ratio to evaluate the addition as more than twenty-five percent less than the actual ground coverage of existing building. The floodplain overlay district ordinance reads as follows: Use regulations to make floodplain overlay district. No new building or structures shall be erected, obstructed, altered, enlarged, or moved, and no dubbing, filling, or earth transfer or relocation shall be permitted, any activity shall be permitted. dwellings lawfully existing prior to the adoption of these provisions include an enlargement in area up to twenty-five percent actual ground coverage. The term actual ground coverage does not mean building coverage or ground coverage. Recently, a vast suggestion with the approval of Maya Code for the City Council added the definition to the zip zoning ordinance of building coverage with the sole purpose of narrowing the size of buildings to thirty percent of the lot area of residence A zoning district due to the fact that there was no maximum floor area ratio required in residence A districts. The actual ground coverage of the new addition is fourteen square feet. ISD has issued many permits for decks in addition to large and small that were built on concrete piers. Typical projects are required a special permit on large commercial projects, or heavy projects that have full of underground foundations or block under the first building level. All construction projects in a floodplain in matter of what their actual ground coverage are required to be approved by the Quincy Conservation Commission and the Massachusetts Department of Wildlife Protection for compliance with the floodplain stormwater and female regulations. All floodplain projects must also be approved by the Quincy Engineering Department in order to maintain the state's insurance rating, which translates to a fifteen percent savings for the citizens who provide flood insurance. Fifteen percent reduction being the best in the state. This project was originally approved as a three-family by the Quincy Conservation Commission and D E P on August sixth, two thousand twenty-one. The Act will assert that I read the floodplain overlay district ordinance in a way that creates an enormous loophole that beats the purpose of the floodplain overlay district by doubling the size of the structure. The floodplain ordinance does not regulate the size of structures. The purpose of the floodplain overlay district is listed in section eight-point-one-point-one. Eight-point-one-point-one, the purpose, the purpose of the floodplain overlay district act. One, ensure public safety through reducing the threats to life and personal property. Two, eliminate new hazards for emergency response officials. Three, prevent the occurrence of public areas used to develop and walk while contamination and pollution due to flooding. Four, avoid the loss of utility services or damage by flooding which disrupt or shut down the utility network and impact reach of the community beyond the site of flooding. Five, eliminate costs associated with the response and cleanup of flooding conditions. And six, reduce damage to public and private properties under the flooding waters. The floodplain overlay district ordinance regulates the impacts that a foundation may have on a flood zone, and that is why the term actual ground coverage is used in the ordinance. The dimensional size of the shortage is a separate matter and is regulated by dimensional regulations in section four. The size of the addition, in this case, is limited by floor area ratio. The Act will assert that the F A R is incorrect based on the opinion of how calculated it should be made. The definition of gross floor areas is as follows: With some of the gross horizontal areas of the several floors of a building, excluding areas used for accessory garage purposes and such base of the cell areas, is a door exclusively to use as a necessary accessory to the operation of the building. All horizontal dimensions shall be taken from the face of walls excluding unclosed balconies. It shall include the horizontal area of each floor level towards stairwells and elevator shafts. Notwithstanding the first sentence of the gross floor area definition, the exclusion grant of accessory garage purposes shall not apply to either residence B or business A zoning districts. The gross floor area of the addition is eighteen-hundred-and-thirty-six square feet. According to the assesses page, the gross floor area of the existing home is eight-hundred-and-ninety-six and seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet, respectively for a total of thirty-five-hundred square feet of gross floor area. The F A R is calculated by finding the gross floor area by the lot size. Thirty-five-hundred square feet divided into eighty-seven-hundred-one square feet is point four of the floor area ratio. Eighty-seven-hundred-one is the actual lot size according to the ground survey done by the cell board. Assessors' information is accurate, the assessor makes no deductions for stairwells. The second floor of the existing building is logic, first floor area, the first floor because of the other cantilever. Basins and accessory structures are exempt from the updated calculations. In summary, ISD's practice of issuing past and present building presence in a flood zone without the need for a special permit, where the actual ground coverage is less than twenty-five percent is a well-established past practice that applies with the floodplain ordinance, floodplain overlay ordinance. I respectfully ask the board to consider the ramifications to all the property owners in favor of vote all to this fair and efficient past practice. I appreciate the good work the board does, and I trust the board will carefully review the appeal and I support their decision. Sincerely, J Duke, a supporter of our state.
No, I saw that somewhere, I just read that. I know, I don't know what was changed on it, but I read that.
It's dated yesterday.
I know, what's the new?
Counselor, was there a prior version of this, or is this just new yesterday?
Of the senior's letter?
Yeah.
That, that's the only version.
Okay, yeah, oh, just here. Thank you, that was mine.
Um, is that a mixture, copy of Mr. Dukey's letter I would say?
Yeah, I got one. Hang on.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Cause if you give me one all, no, that's my, you can mind it up. Thank you. Yeah, I know. And, and, I know, I know, I'm trying to figure this out, I, there's two things I have to question. You know, I just, I trust that Mr. King's everything, so.
I, I have a point there, I don't know, we, we have an opinion.
Yep.
Uh, with the silk, Attorney Silverstein.
Yep.
We have J Duke, uh, who we know, and we, we trust his opinions, and
Yep.
it's, it's been going on forever, you know? How we've been approaching, uh, F A R and floodplains. The Conservation Commission reviewed it, uh, everybody's reviewed it. Eventually, either case is gonna end up in court.
It is.
Now, I don't wanna beg off and say, you know, but I'm, I can't wave one opinion against another, I'm not, I'm, I'm not that in tune with the law in the interpretation of what it is.
But it's written in different meaning, of course.
Right, I don't have an opinion on it because I'm relying on the expertise of Attorney Silverstein and, and J.
Can I, when, when?
If we let it stand, it's gonna end up in court, if we rescind it, it's gonna end up in court. Correct?
No, I don't know, I don't know that it's rescinded, I don't know what happened. Are they gonna take it to court, maybe he'll, I don't know, I just, and, and I felt the same way. I just, and I felt the same way from the beginning. I really did, reading this, and I'm, you know, here's a guy I trusted for years to take his interpretations of the law.
Could I say just one thing quickly? Really quickly.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to be really clear. What we're asking for is not that they not be allowed to build it, but that they have to come in for a special permit and prove that they're not going to be burdening it further. We're asking that you find a special permit for it.
Didn't we grant?
No, we didn't.
We didn't grant.
We didn't grant nothing. They went down, read the law real different, come in with other paperwork, and Mr. Duka said, you're right, you can have a permit. He gave him a permit.
Oh, so.
He gave him a permit. Because there wasn't a second structure on that.
Oh, okay.
Your interpretations of all this stuff too, with the new director?
I've gone along with Jay's interpretation. He is that there's no sense in beating them up twice if they go to conservation and it's on piers. The whole, the whole reason for the floodplain overlay district is not to affect other properties. If there's no foundation, you haven't changed anything. This is land subject to coastal storm blowage. You're not going to stop the ocean.
And we've done about, I'm going to say 12, 15 of these, haven't we?
We've done quite a few just in this area.
Yeah.
We just did one a few minutes ago on Hope Island.
No, no, I know that. I'm just, they're going to have flow tubes and all that. I'm talking about piers.
Yes, we've done a number of them.
Like, yeah, always down the Nile, yeah. Right. It's up to us guys to make a decision. I'll tell you, I'm going to vote with Mr. Duka and let it go. Just, they gotta, they gotta do what they gotta do and you gotta know, I just, I believe you read the law. And you read the law. He ain't gaining anything. This is a guy, what would he gain out of it? Zero. Zero, give him a permit. So, in his opinion, he believes they should have got a permit. So, no, you're out.
Is there, is there an opposition here?
No, we heard, we heard, we heard, yeah, that's what we, people, we already know what the people think because we already declined the building they had.
True.
So, we know they don't want it. Know that. I, I didn't like it. A lot of guys in the board did not like it, but I, I do believe Mr. Duka did his due diligence and he had a hand in a permitting issue. So, I don't know. I don't know. You know, it's, it's, you're out of board. So, I'm just going to vote with Mr. Duka and not accept the, you're not, you could be wow all you want. Someone's trying to talk to you as board. So if you're going to be disruptive, please leave. Very simple. We're making a decision. Next door, I feel, go to court. Go to court, go to court. That's what they do. That's where they go. Money, plus money, plus money, whoever. Again, it's just a debacle. So.
We don't have any, we're not making a decision based on the condition of, you know, the lease agreement that they have or don't have, we're making a decision on the building permit.
The building permit.
Yeah.
Did he have the right to give a permit?
And I've been up here.
That's what the question is.
I've been up here 10 years and have trusted pay implicitly and I will continue to trust pay, so I will.
This is to me to have nothing to hand.
Yeah, I'll be voting to.
If anything, it probably bothered him because after he knew how we felt about it. That's, that's the way I look at it now. Like, he gave a permit away that he probably didn't want to and he goes like that, sorry guys, but they have a, and that's his law. That's his determination law. Now, with mine, it's.
No, we're not, we're not up here to vote on whether or not they manage a bad property. We're here to support or not support Jay's decision to issue a permit, Phil. Correct?
Correct.
Because we have to support the former Inspection Services Director.
He gave a lot of them out.
Well, that's the thing, you know, there's a lot of precedence for having issued permits like this. Historically, it's been allowed in the city. Mr. Duka follows ordinances, he follows the interpretations that he's required, followed by powers above him. This, I'm not prepared to overturn precedents. I think that's a court to four and either way we go, it may end up in court as Charlie indicated. And the courts can hear both sides and decide whether it was a misinterpretation of the ordinance. Could very well be, might, maybe not, but that's not for me to decide. I'm going to uphold a decision.
Comment?
Same, no, same thing. I, there's two opinions, differing opinions. I'm not, I don't think I'm in a position to determine which one's correct and which one's incorrect. And that, I, I agree with what your open statement was, that this more than likely ends up in land court so that they can get a confirmed opinion of the both sides of the argument. I, I, both opinions are there.
Yeah.
I would vote up, hold Mr. Duka's opinion.
Before we do that, you know, how this board feels, I'd like to counsel if you'd like to say a few words for the neighborhoods that you've been involved in this.
Yeah. Dave, we had a little, we, we wrote, and we all hoped that 15, 17 Jewett's been going on for a while. Attorney Silverstein makes some great points and everybody here, you know, works hard and leans heavily on the Jay Dukas, the Rob Conlins to try to do the right thing. Dave DeBarner and myself were both in Mr. Duka's office about this situation. I was probably in there three or four other times trying to figure out how to make this either work or not work and Jay, Jay did his homework and I respect what you're talking about, about rescinding and not having that, that extra step that, you know, that it's going to go to court as Charlie was saying, regardless to land court. But, you know, I keep swaying away from zoning a little bit here and I had talked to Chairman, Mr. Atkins, a little bit about that neighborhood and the house itself and the owner that doesn't occupy it. I'm very disappointed that, you know, that owner isn't here. That owner must realize that 15, 17 Jewett is taking a beating and it should by the neighbors because of the activity down there. And I won't get into it, there's been plenty of calls and Attorney Silverstein mentioned, you know, a month ago, and that was the Boston Police Company. That wasn't even Quincy. If I mention 15, 17 Jewett to the Quincy Police, they know exactly what I'm talking about. So it disappoints me a little bit in regards that they, they seem like they keep getting away with it. They're benefiting somehow and it's at the expense of the neighbors who, who are concerned. I wouldn't want that on my street either and I keep trying to figure out how to curb it a little bit. Last night I met with some members of the City Solicitor's Office and we were trying to take a look at that in regards to being disorderly and blight and I know the first 14 Nelson Street, you talked a little bit about curbing that gentleman in regards to the place. It's not like it's, you know, Augusta National down there, that house, it's not taken care of at all. It's beat up, it'll get worse and the person won't, the person doesn't care about it. So even if it was, whatever decision you make, one way or the other, and it goes forward, I look at it as that owner out there in wherever they live, not in Quincy and not in Housneck, is looking like, well, we got away with it again and too bad for Jewett Street, they're going to have to put up with it. And the most we can do is, I talked to the Solicitor's Office, is have Inspection Services just out there pounding them all the time if there's something wrong and, you know, you don't want that either. That disturbs the neighborhood. So I respect all the work you guys have done. I'm up here a lot and it's been, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly up here and I understand the position you're in and I really respect Jay Duka. All the times that I've been in here with him, even not 15, 17 Jewett, but a lot of other things, he takes the time, he'd go through everything and never really come out with one way or the other. He'd try to go letter of the law on what he thought it was. So I know you got a hard decision tonight. I really support the neighbors though. I think Attorney Silverstein did a great job presenting. I wouldn't mind seeing this get rescinded and go into land court with the idea that, you know, maybe they look at it and say, gee, the board really took a good look at this. I think if it goes in the way it does, it probably gives it a little, I don't know if it gives it positivity or not from the board, but I wouldn't want to see that. I'd like to see when the decision happens, it's even Steven. So, and I know again, we've done plenty of these, Chairman. We've done plenty of these situations as Mr. Conlon said over the past number of years. So, thank you.
Counsel, you know, when we were talking on the phone the other day, you said the Boston Police. I just thought you were, you know, didn't you, you know, and you said it again. You tell me the Boston Police went down?
Yeah, there was a robbery. Don't know all the ins and outs. I've got Quincy looking at it. I've got Quincy looking at that house all the time now, but they came down, it was stolen property, unmarked.
Oh, oh, I thought they came down because something happened.
Yeah, they were chasing the guy, the 15, 17 Jewett again. It all leads to 15, 17 Jewett.
Why, why hasn't the owner thrown them out, given them time? I mean, it's been going on for years.
I'm going to work with Jim Timm as a Solicitor's Office to look at it more and more and maybe it's something, as we, and I know Counsel Mahoney, I think she's still here, we voted the other night to do an analysis of zoning across the board. Maybe there's a tweak in there too that talks about situations like this that not only you have a zoning opportunity here to go one way or the other, but, you know, as you guys pointed out with 14 Nelson, like, straighten your act up and, you know, and make it a nice home and nice neighbors and I'm sure the street would have a different opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. So this has been going on for quite some time, for two years. This applicant came in and did not have the correct deed. He did not have the correct applications. It changed, it changed its mind when it went to, when it went to conservation. Conservation put some tags on it too saying that it had to have special permitting because it was the other perm. It has had special conditions every step of the way. One of the things that I'm really bothered by and I'm very much in the same situation where I know all of you work very hard, I know it's difficult, and I'm not here to say whether or not, you know, Commissioner Duka did something right or wrong, but it was on his last day at 2:00 that he gave a special permit to somebody that has gotten special conditions and he's gone along. When you were here the last time, when we were here the last time, I was not here because I had COVID, so I couldn't come. So one of the things that you said was it was, it was, it was superficial detrimental to the neighborhood. Basically, what he was saying in the zoning code, it was saying that this neighbor, this developer, this person who owns this property was not taking care of it, just like we talked about on Nelson Street. But the problem having this, and I know that the Commissioner can give out a special permit, but you as a board can also say no and let them go to land court because this neighborhood has spent $20,000 on lawyers. And what you're saying is, I don't feel comfortable as your board, I don't feel comfortable, let them go to land court. Let the neighbors, let the citizens of the city of Quincy pay out of their pocket to go to land court. Well, why don't we let the developer pay out of their pocket? Because right now, that's what's happening. And our citizens can't afford it and this is what it aims to be able to represent our citizens. It used to be a time that when you came up here and neighbors said, this is not the development, we want zoning and we do have zoning laws. We do.
That's right.
And I have to tell you that, you know, looking at it and saying, I, you know, I think Jay Duka did the greatest job in the world. Well, there's some questions here. There's some questions here and I think it should lean towards the developer. Let them take it to land court. Don't ask the neighbors to do that. That is our job as citizens of Queens. Yeah, it is.
I didn't say it was.
It is, but I'm just saying. I'm very defensive about this because it comes down to myself because it's been two years.
But if you're framing that, Counsel, like, it's a different question. The question is, did he have a right to give a permit? Yes or no? That's the question.
Yep.
Not whether I like anyone, don't like it. We did like the project, remember?
I do remember.
Okay.
And you said no to the project. I watched it on home from my dad with COVID.
Now you're asking me to say that guy didn't have a right to do what he did. You're going to put that on me? No, I'm not because I think he did his job. Duka did his job.
But you don't spell that word on the last day of his job. You should have said no, you go to the next commissioner.
I don't know the last day, I have no idea.
The next commissioner should be able to do it. On the last day of your job, when you're leaving your job on that day, when people don't know, so the neighborhood, how about it?
So Counsel, what you're saying is he did something wrong. That's what I'm saying.
What I'm saying is that you as a board have a right. What I'm saying is, get this board, have a right to rescind this and let it go to court and let the developer.
Been around long enough.
I have it around long enough and I'm disappointed that you're going to actually put this on the taxpayers of the city of Quincy that's supposed to do it.
You're asking me to say that the guy in there did a long job. I don't think he did. I think he did his job with what he had.
Okay, well, I also, at a special meeting that we had over the summer in this, in this building, when we were asking this question, that he was suggesting that exactly what was presented.
Then what's going to change things again? Yes or no?
What was presented?
Two different things.
Nope, what was presented to us was we were told that it would be too expensive for the developer to be able to do exactly what they're doing. And what was presented by, by Mr. Silverstein was exactly that, that it's coming in underneath the number and that they're not going to be required to have, you know, to have the cement broadens or to be able to do certain things when they're developing this. That's what's happening.
No, your accusation is Mr. Duka last day made it happen and it's wrong. That's what you're saying?
I'm saying that we as a board can make a decision to actually say.
I think it's actually gas on the fire at the end there. That's what you're doing.
Yep, no, I didn't.
You're throwing gas on the end.
I'm not throwing gas in there.
Yes, you are.
You'll actually have every opportunity to say that.
That's not the issue here.
Yes, it is.
Issue is, did he have the right to make that permit? Give that permit? Simple. Yes or no? That's what the question is here tonight. Nothing else. There is nothing else here.
There is something else.
No, there is.
Yeah, but you're, you're.
You're making it something else.
No, I'm not making it something else.
Yeah, you are.
No, I'm not.
It seems me you are.
No, I'm not.
Thank you for speaking.
You're welcome.
Over. So, let's get into a vote. Have a motion, please, and we can vote accordingly.
GBA 2316, Jonathan Silverstein asks for administrative appeal of the issuance of a permit to allow construction in addition to extensive renovation and extensive renovations to the existing dwelling on the premise number 15 Jewett Street, Quincy, and make a motion to.
Deny.
Deny the appeal.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor? Aye. opposed? Pass. Five to none. Take five minutes, guys. Take five minutes, guys. Tonight's agenda, ZB A 2317, name and address for finding to install a six-foot safety fence, privacy fence, on Roger Street side of 47 Paul Place. The absentee representative there?
Name and address.
Name and address for the record.
Living with 47 Hall Place in Quincy.
Right, what do you want to do?
I'm looking to install a six-foot fencing, just from the half of my house all the way to the driveway.
Now, you're going past the driveway too?
No, 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 just right at the corner of the driveway, where it's connected to the, just to the driveway. That's it. No, not going past the driveway.
Where's it going to start?
Going to start, uh...
From the corner, because you can't see over six-foot fence.
Right, we're not, we're not going to do anything in the corner, especially my house is situated on the, on the corner. It won't shock the other site, the turn and everything. So, we're going to start at the side door of the, of the house. That would be the side back door of the house, and it carries all the way to...
That's about 20 feet back, right?
I think, I think so, because it's a long, it's pretty long.
I know, I got a pitch, and I just, I just got to go back and look and see where I am. I thought like, if we cut it about 12 feet back in the corner, it should be plenty robbed for that.
But this is the end of your house.
So, 12, he wants to put up a six-foot fence. I'm saying if he's back 12 feet, at least 12, yeah, he's back about 20 something. But what do we say, like, on the corner, like, 12 feet? Can you walk to 12 feet in the corner?
Yeah.
Because this guy gets, he's back 15 feet back.
He's going to enter.
So, that's all the way down here. So, I'm saying, people are fishing, people are at least, yeah. All right. Yeah, looking at it, like, even you think, you're going to be, that's back, 20 feet and things. So, if you go at least 15, it'll look like the neighbors, and it'll look like they won't stop the same and go back in the planning room for people to, to be symmetrical and come around fun.
Right.
All right?
So, you're saying that across the street?
Yes, there's 15, they're 15 feet back from the end.
See what he's saying?
Yes, so basically the same.
Come closer, yeah. Come closer to the hall.
Right.
Yeah.
So...
Right?
Yeah, yeah, and like, at least 15, keep it 15 feet back from the corner. From the lot line.
Yes, exactly.
Then people can see around the corner if a car's coming. You guys going very...
Because you were going to, were you going to stop at your walkway? Is that what you planned on?
Yes, but it's going to be, it's going to be like slopes planted on 45, so it will be visible.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yes.
You're going to keep the six-foot part back, minimum of 15 feet, correct?
I understand. Is that...
You said you're going to slope it down.
Right.
Right. The six-foot piece?
Yes.
Go back a minimum of 15 feet from the corner of your lot line.
Yes.
So, you're not start there. Like, if you get a three-footer going up to the six-foot, right?
Right.
Down, you're starting six-foot, 15 feet back, if you can see where...
From Hall Place.
Yes.
Which you're already going to be.
Right.
What's confusing you? What's confusing me too, is all right. I have no questions.
No questions.
John, no questions. You can have a seat. Does anyone want to speak in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a seat. Please get some more questions. Counsel?
Hello?
Hello.
James, 117 Broad Street. Yeah, I bought the, with the, the, nice guy, the property next door. You already know how it's a simple fence. I believe he really doesn't want to go that far anyways, but I'm sure it might look nicer and start it that way. So, very much in favor. A woman by the name of Patricia Mortimer had just a concern to make sure that it didn't obstruct the owner view. I spoke with her, and I said that you had no intention to do him that, and she said, "All right, great."
Thank you, Counsel.
Thanks, Counsel.
Thank you for your work. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Yeah, you got to come up, name and address. Put it on the record, listen here. Because it goes into a microphone, so we can hear it. We got to look back at the tape.
My name's Albert Vaughn, I live at 48 Hall Place, and I'm here to support...
Has he got you in the morning?
No. He's a great name. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else want to speak in favor? John?
This is your moment.
Your moment?
I have a question. John Ruffel, East Two Ground Mall Road. Do you need permission to build a fence?
Yeah, six feet.
Is it because they're on the corner? That's why? So, if you, if you're not on the corner, you don't need permission?
Yeah, well, you can't go over six, if you go an eight feet, you need...
Yeah, I know if you go eight feet, but the building is fine, just because it's on...
It's in the sightline.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of him building the fence.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Last call? Call a call, hearing phones. Letter from the GP, that you? Now, maybe you, these projects have no common sense. Is there anyone opposed who are on the side? First call? Second call? Third call, call.
Favor.
Favor.
ZB A 2317, Landman, we are finding to install a six-foot fence on the Roger side of the premise number 47 of Hall Place, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the finding as long as it's 15 feet back from Hall Place.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? President, thanks agenda. ZB A 2318. Help me with this, Counsel.
Albert Kuluwawa. I only know because I made sure I practiced my...
He asked for a very...
Actually, Rich.
Rich, oh, Rich, okay.
He goes easier than me.
Special permit, construct a two-story, two-residential units above the existing commercial building with an extension over the driveway in the central 110 Franklin. Okay, is that in the historic district?
You know, I thought not initially, because there's actually two maps. There's one map that's on the...
Here we go.
The GPS, the GIC, city website, it shows there's a trail from the Adamsburg place down to the Quincy Center Historic District. But evidently, there's another map that Mr. Fatsis suggests applies that they, that, I'm not sure it's known, or whatever, when there was another project that was proposed, that shows that it is within that. So, I think there's some clarification that needs, but it appears as though, yes, it is in the historic district.
So, before you want to do this, do you want to check with them?
Well, yeah, I'd like to make a little presentation. Maybe we can continue the meeting to another, to another night. I spoke with Mr. Fatsis, he said that they have a historic commission, is meeting Thursday. I don't know if I'll be able to get on the agenda by then.
Guys, is that all right? Go do that, sure. Bye.
So, listen, I, Rich came to me. He's a small business owner. He owns a barber shop. I know you have a photo, you should have a photo in your, in package. Everybody knows the barber shop. It's very successful. He's an extremely hard-working gentleman. It's a small life, I grant. When he came to me, I said, "Dude, I don't know, you're, you're, you're asking for quite a bit there." But then he explained, and I talked to the board counselor, Anthony Giornaro, seemed to think it might be a good fit for the neighborhood. And I know he's written aboard a, an email. Some people have commented favorably, he has a number of neighbors who have written letters in support. What he wants to do is have him and his family live above their small business that he works very hard. Now, there's big, major development going on on Franklin Street. Here's a small guy who works hard every day, has a small business, and is just trying to put residents above his property so that he and his family can live right where they're, right where they're, right where he works and where he's working. And if you look at it, by the way, the neighbor that just received relief from this board for development of good property in the rare, as well as redeveloping their, their front property, supports this project as well. He sent me an email of support. I'm not sure if it's in the record, but I'll forward it to the, to the board tonight when I get home. Other members, there's another neighbor on 177 Franklin Street that wrote a letter in support as well. So, if you look at it, at first, the proposal, the thought was that they were going to have almost like a copport above. There's already parking, if you're looking at the building on the left-hand side. The way, yeah, at least...
I mean, you can put five, but how are you going to get in and out? So, you can't just hold two cars.
That's exactly right. So, there's, we would definitely need relief with the guys, the parking. But it's in law, yeah, no, I understand, but you're talking about an area that's being developed, it's on, on a main street. It's a mixed use, it's appropriate mixed use. It's a business that's been around for some time. It's a small businessman that needs the relief. And, you know, the size of the lot, while I understand it's small, it's really not taking up any more than what the building is taking up any, currently, if you include the parking on the left, which is being used as parking right now. It's the same footprint. There was some comments, I had discussions with Rob about windows, because it was so close to the property line on the left. By the way, the building on the left is going to be at least eight to 10, or even more, feet away from their property line. And they support this project, by the way. And it will be fully sprinkled, so that kind of alleviates the issue with regards to windows. However, Rich would be willing to try to go back to the drawing board and maybe kick the second floor back a little bit, so that the windows wouldn't be an issue. In any event, they'd have to comply with codes, or if the windows are an issue, then it would have to be dealt with through the building department one way or the other. So, if you, if you take a step back and you look at it, you look at the whole area, you know, and drive by there and see what it looks like right now, the development that's going on across the street, Nupkin Donuts, and then behind with the barn, there was, there was another project that was right off of Franklin Street, and the one right to the right of them. He sees this construction going on all over the place, all around him. The facade, although it's nice, a lot of people commented that it would look very nice, may not quite fit with the historic commission, and that's not a problem either. You know, I know that Mr. Al Kuluwawa is willing to, you know, have his architect go back and change the facade to comply with the, with the historic commission, but he does have significant support for this project. I know there were some comments, one was about the look of the building, which, you know, certainly can be remedied. The setback is the setback, it's where it is now. So, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure as it is, and we're really adding two, two stories on top of this. So, the parking, I would suggest, is the primary, is the primary concern.
It is.
Enclosing that parking lot is, is, you know, I mean, you have, as far as the businesses go, there's Coffee Break right next door, no parking. There's another business, I forget the name of it, no parking. So, you know, the business itself isn't, you know, necessarily a problem with regards to parking. But two units for two spaces is what we're asking for, but they're not over the bar units, and the intent is to have Rich and his, and his parents move into both of those units. And they're going to be there long-term. Granted, not forever, but, but long-term nonetheless. So, if the board would like to sit and, you know, maybe digest and consider it, and then reconvene on it, maybe we'll be able to get even more support between now and then for the parking.
And, and Counsel, to me, it's not support if you come in here with 10,000 people. I couldn't support two apartments on top of our place for nobody. I could maybe do one for them, to live there and have their business, the two parking spaces. Two apartments?
So, you're, we're short two parking spaces?
But, but it's this, but it's this. It's like, with all that development down there, if you took two, 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 no one would be able to park his business.
I appreciate that. But the developments, and not to push back, it definitely don't want to...
No, I get it, I get it.
But the developments that are being proposed are multi-multi-unit developments, right?
Right.
And I understand it has the same impact. This is a small guy with a small business.
I get it.
That, that's just looking to have his family move in. And I think that this, this should be some consideration and some... and some appreciation for the fact that, you know, although it's a small lot, there's two parking spaces. You know, by the way, if you look at the photo that you have...
It's two downs and swift feet.
If he didn't enclose it to make it look better, it could be driven right through and you could have four parking spaces.
But you could, there's no way. You can't get in and out. So it's, it's a can of parking, they're no good.
Well, you can have...
But they're useless. Four for their family, for their family to get a four. You can't have another person object.
No, 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 that's what, Rich is going to live on the second floor. His parents on the second, on the third floor. So it's the same family. Believe me, it's the same family.
But here's what I'm trying to say, and I, I get what you're saying. But if people that come down here and they want to enroll a apartment for their, for their help, they can't have it. It's against where they want it, it's against the rule. But because now they, they mean to die, now you're going to have to... So what do you do? You make it in common. They're going to have to make an apartment in common, one apartment.
In this, in this street parking for, for at night when, when...
Oh, of course it is.
When the business...
All of a sudden, you're home all day, and there's a couple other people home all day. And all of a sudden, it's those parking. It's not for today. I don't think like that. I don't think like it's about when the building is there.
No, I appreciate that.
I think for 30 years down the road, what's going to happen? Those people are going to have five kids up there, or three kids, and then you got, they're 15, 16, 17, 18, you got four, five guys. Where are they? Oh, they're on Franklin Street. Where's the other part? They're on Franklin Street. Now he's trying to open up a business because he dies and he's, and he's getting his haircut, and there's no place for the people. They just keep going. They go, I'm done. Their business is gone.
I hear the comments on the parking, and I appreciate that.
Work with you, but it's like, it's hot.
I, I understand. You know, if, if it's possible, maybe we could put it on for further here and we go back, we take a look at it. We, we, I talked with Jim on the historic site and then...
I'd like to know that. I'd like to know what they say and what they're doing with the building. Because if it is, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be put in there. I don't think they would like that.
No, no, I, I, no, I appreciate that. That's, it wasn't clear that it was in the historic district because of the issue.
That's right, I was, I was going to...
You're on the GPS?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he's not wrong. It's clearly my business being, you know, like, and, and there's a walking trail, like you said.
Right. And it actually crosses over to the other side.
It crosses over to the other side before you, I was like, because I was like, I, I, I don't think we brought up the historic district on that other building we were talking about.
No, nor, nor the, nor the Dunkin' Donuts is going to be right across the street.
Yeah, and that, and...
Closer to the Adams House.
The Dunkin' Donuts is actually on the side of the road with the trail it, which crosses the street. So I, I would, I would agree. I wouldn't have thought of it. I, my own comments are, I, I, I actually really liked the building when I looked at it. I thought it was, I thought it was a really nice building. We had an issue with the roof deck down there, I believe, on that other one.
Yeah.
I think there was a lot of people that, so I think, you know, that would be one area of concern I would have if you had. And I understand you were trying to have some exterior living space up there. But, you know, it basically is in the backyard, it's a breakable. And I know we had an issue on that. So I would probably, I wouldn't even consider that aspect. Just, just my own opinion, just because of how much pushback we had on the one adjacent. And then I, I, I'm less of a stickler on the parking. I don't disagree, that I don't think it's enough. But at the same time, I think that it's a different world. So I'm less of a...
Until you need a haircut.
Well, some of us won't have to worry about that.
If I have to stay on this board, I won't be much longer, much longer. So I would agree.
If there aren't available parking, that, that's not used for customers, right? That... No, that's, that's issued for the owner. The customers don't, do not use that. And if you look, you could probably, in tandem again, at least forecast possibly.
I pulled in there and used my cam 20, 15 seconds. My face, what are you doing? He goes, relax, relax.
City. Use parking for me?
I'm going height, 40 more feet.
Now you're taking the roof deck off.
No, it's off the bat, though. It's really not an additional story.
No, it's, it's, that's the height of the fence and stuff.
Five foot. Peak foot, second floor.
It'll be 35. I think it's 34, 342.
Yeah, it's not going to be a platform by the...
And in that, in that, and that would also say that in that district, in that surrounding business area, there are a number of utilities that are considerably higher than that, that building itself.
I know, but we, right, I think it's 30, 34 feet to the top of, yeah.
We go to page eighty-four, it says 40 more. I did the roof thing.
The galvanized peak. Oh, maybe it isn't. You're right, you're right, because it's got to hit roof, right?
Yep. I think that was, I don't know if that was...
I think every other apartment, it will come right down, it'll be good. All right.
And ask that you continue the...
People are here, I just want to hear some people. We'll go through all that. Thank you, thank you, sir. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call? Third call? No, we had a letter from the D P W, fortunately, here we go. They're letting the D P W, they reviewed the project, they have no comment. Something about the store that...
There's a, there's a, one of them put that soup of Dunkin' Donuts there.
Well, it's going to be built like the, you know, great place.
Like, yeah.
Like, yeah. You know, they're going to really change their brand.
Change their brand. Is there anyone here opposed or undecided? First call? Come on. Name me, I just saw a record.
Yeah, my name is David Jacobs. I live at 10 Charles Street, Quincy.
First speaker, sure.
Yeah, so saw the project online, all in favor of the project. Thought you did a good job. I believe, just trying to help the guy out. The only thing is, is I don't think, like you said, I don't think it fits in with the neighborhood that's there. I worked nine years for the National Park Service, four years here in Quincy, and I also served on the Quincy Historic Commission for six years. So I think, you know, as someone who worked for the National Park Service who worked at the Adams Houses, you know, the number-one complaint that people really have when they come here is how developed it is around the workplaces. And there's nothing we can do about that. It's already happened, you know. But I think as we're moving forward and we're seeing new construction there, I think we have the opportunity to kind of tweak things to make it look, you know, a little better. Like, people always comment about the service station across the street, you know. It's like, oh, the service station for this, it's about 1950, you know what I mean? So I just think we have an opportunity here to make it look a little more... Is it brick? The building is brick?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, is it white?
White brick.
White brick?
It's really not determined yet.
Well, I know that that, that's usually the verdict of the historic commission. But the only thing is, a lot of times, servant on the historic commission. A lot of times, the Z B A will pass stuff. And it'll come to the historic commission, and I see you guys say it too. Oh, you know, this was already passed by the planning board. This was, yeah, so where Tony Ritchie will say, well, you know, Z B A already looked at this. Who are we to say, you know, overrule what Z B A did or what, vice versa? You know, you could have gone to the historic commission, and you guys could say, well, gee, you know, the historic commission already looked at this. And, you know, who are we to overrule that? You know, so I just think, you know, I'm in favor of this project, the way it's proposed. I know you have an issue with parking. I find that a little odd because you sold, you let Louis' apartment market sold, you know, and you weren't concerned about any parking then. I'm not really concerned...
10,000 spots down, I was saying. The big giant went right across the street. Why, why would I?
So, that's good. So I'm not concerned with parking. That doesn't bother me at all. I'm going to wait until I have everybody's attention. Because that's the respect I deserve.
Wasn't that what I needed?
Just let me know when you're ready.
Come on.
So, so I'm just saying, I'm in favor of this project. I don't think parking is an issue. My father-in-law is a developer in Cambridge, and he thinks it's silly that we have all these parking requirements. You know, I think on-street parking is the way to go. Once the on-street parking fills up, you know, it'll basically, that, that's all the carrying capacity for the city. If we keep adding parking spaces for Quincy, that will increase the amount of cars that we actually have here. And I think a lot of us think, oh, we don't want on-street parking. But if we keep building parking spaces, we will keep having more cars. The only way to reduce the amount of cars that are here is to actually reduce the amount of parking that, that we have available at these people's residences. So I'm all in favor of on-street parking. So I don't, I don't think it's a problem. But I would like to see the building, you know, being more architecturally friendly to try and add to the historic district.
Thanks, Mr. Attentive. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Mr. Dunn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Name and address, sorry.
James...
No, right there, we got the microphone.
James Stein, Seven Shoreside Road, 167 Bad Park Street. Whichever one you want to use. I'm strongly opposed, there's, anybody that, I don't begrudge someone that wants to move their family over, their business, but backing out over the sidewalk, you're talking four, five cars backing out over the sidewalk. It's just an accident waiting to happen. Okay, you talk about on-street parking. I get it, but what are you doing in a snowstorm? Where do they go? That's an emergency zone. You have to get the cars off the street at night. It's an emergency zone. And that project is in a historic zone. I know because I did the project across the street with Dunkin' Donuts, which we firmly had a hard time with, with parking in the area. Okay? And I won't elaborate to that. I'll just leave it at that. And I just want to go, I strongly oppose starting to stuff five pounds of stuff into a one-pound bag.
Name and... Anyone else opposed or undecided, second call? Third call? Last caller here in close. Want to move this a month? Oh, I got some letters there. We're going to just, yeah. You want to, month? You need more?
No.
May ninth? May ninth? May ninth.
Are we reading this in front?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
From Counselor Adronico. Pass on comments, you receive positive feedback, makes huge component of the proposal mentioned as a plus. Proposal fixed with ongoing project within the surrounding few blocks. Add more housing, more house, keep housing prices down. Constructive feedback, proposal takes away available parking spots after need for more spaces to modern. Height of the buildings too tall. Number of variations requested is too many. Rich Durusha, 177A Independent Tab. As a resident, sorry, these are in support.
All right, just, just, we just got him, so we'll go back and show him the line.
So Rich Durusha, 177 Independence for Support. As a resident, please considering issuing a special permit, live down the street. Have been a patron for seven years. The owners have always maintained a clean interior and exterior appearance of the shop. But Rich is exceptional, he's warm, welcoming to every community member. He's a responsible business owner and supports our local businesses in and around. Man deserves this, please consider showing the permit. Kevin and Taran Geary, 10 San Sett Ave, Quincy. Would like to address it tonight to support redevelopment of 110 Franklin Street. Appears to be a reasonable-sized addition to the neighborhood. Two residential units are a picture of a more appropriate development to take Quincy in the right direction. Room for growth within reason. The brick facade will nicely complement other structures around it. And the garage, I'm there does a job mitigating the hardened concerns. Mr. Al, I'm sorry, I forgot. I watched your name, Al Kuluwawa. Has, Rich has been a pillar of the community for years. He's a responsible, well-respected business owner of Tensas Day. But would like, just like to keep up with the growth of the great city. Gerard Shea, he said Albatross. I'm writing on behalf of Rich. Taking a look at the proposal online, what you posted, I feel like it's a great idea. Born and raised in Quincy. See how the city's grown over the years. Nice to see a guy like Rich get the same opportunity. He works hard, cares for the community, always tries to make people happy and improve things along the way. We see time and time again, major developers, big guys with their opportunities, and it's heartwarming knowing Rich can be part of that himself and grow and capitalize like us. Edward Correios, 32 Alton Road. I'm writing in behalf of Rich, who I've known for over 10 years professionally and personally. He's always been a model citizen, cares about the community residents that reside in. For example, I've seen him at many a time give elderly vets free haircuts to show his gratitude for people who serve this country. I've often also witnessed Rich create a safe and welcoming atmosphere for his customers, employees, where politics, religion, and ethnicity are not discriminated against. Coming forward as committee for a living area above his current establishment. Due to current market prices and the housing in Quincy, it'd be more feasible for him to add an addition rather than rent or purchase to his current relatives. He current, his current residency can only accommodate five individuals, therefore he has to find a realistic solution. And then, that's the same one, sorry. And there's one in opposition. This is Vincent Guarino, 124 Franklin Street, Quincy. I'm writing a letter in opposition to the project. I want 10, the project's non-conforming in many ways in a historical district. The reasons for opposing this project are many, and the biggest reason for opposing this project is parking. Parking relief should not be granted, nor should it be granted. Parking situation's already messed on Franklin, traffic and parking problems. Dunkin' Donuts is already well-known. We have multiple businesses on that block that utilize parking on Franklin Street like Coffee Break, Hancock Appliance, Boston Primutory, just to name, just to name a few. The project directly across the street is adding three more businesses that will need parking for their clients and six residential units as well. In addition to the project right next door, 108 Franklin is adding more storefronts from residential units. Broncos has four employees who will need on-street parking. They all park in the driveway located around 10. It's going to burden on my business, the parking situation's going to burden on my business and the clients, it's only going to get worse. Furthermore, I would like to see where they should not be parking in our lot or their risk being towed at the owner's expense.
Thank you. Court of Public Hearing closed. My vote from May ninth.
Mr. Chairman, Z B A twenty-three dash eighteen, Rich Chaladakara. With C R S store variance, find and special permits to construct a two-story, two-unit residential addition above the existing commercial building with an extension over the driveway and the premises number 110 Franklin Street, Quincy, and make a motion to remove that hearing to mayhem.
Second.
On the motion, stand out all in favor?
Aye.
Nine closed. May ninth, you let us know beforehand, whatever you get from that. I appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Your name is Mr. Chairman. President of tonight's agenda, Z B A twenty-three twenty. Barry Primmens for special permit to operate the dog daycare with the option for overnight accommodations on the premises in the 405 C Street. The applicant or representative here. Name and address, Mr. Le...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For record, attorney Barry Primmens of 909 Lexington Street in Hilton. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Molly O'Neill and Ethan Hoyt, who do business at Seaside Canines. The application is for a special permit so that they can conduct their doggy daycare business, grooming and boarding, that they currently operate from their home. They've outgrown the space there.
What's the address of that?
I mean, what's the address it was at? Where they're currently at?
Yeah.
It is Stone Street, number 45.
Barry, that's our address, we're mobile, that's our business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mobile. My property's next door. Hey, this is bizarre.
And again, the address, the address of the property that they're looking to move into is 405 C Street. It's in the business B zone. So the use is allowed by special permit from this board. The, uh, my clients have entered into a lease with the current owner. They have signed that lease. It's been forwarded to the landlord's attorney. We anticipate that getting executed by him within the next couple of days. I do believe the owner is here tonight as well. What I'd like to do, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is allow Molly and Ethan to tell you all about their business and what they're looking to do.
That would be great. Did you say it was a mobile business right now? Maybe you could explain all that.
They pick up the phone, watch the dog over the phone.
Right.
All right. How you doing, Nate?
Uh, my name is Ethan Hoyt. My wife and I have been operating Seaside Canines since 2016. We started doing it out of her home in 2018 when we bought her home in Housneck. Since then, we have just grown the distance and grown out of the space. Ninety-nine percent of our clients are in the immediate area of Housneck, Upshore, Germantown. All within same walking distance to, to the location of 405 C Street. I'm a veteran, so that allowed me to work from home. Nothing more, free time, so I started giving dogs full-time. As a veteran, I'm lucky enough to serve clients who also serve the community. We have a lot of local police officers, hunter fighters, city numbers, whose dogs we watch. A lot of these clients work long and odd shifts, sometimes twelve, twenty-four hours. Unfortunately, there isn't any sort of business or option available for them to drop their dogs off at during those times. Relogating to 405 C Street would give us roughly eighteen hundred square feet of space for the dogs to properly exercise and roll with one another and socialize.
I, I mean, I, I see the overnight, you want to overnight. And I know there's residency, a lot of residency, a variety. Do you have a meter to know how wild dogs are at night? And are you gonna insulate the building? I don't know.
Yeah. This far isn't...
I know, I would want to hear dark barking all night long. Though it's, it's a big need for it. I've got a lot of call people support.
Yeah.
Hi, Lauren.
Hi.
I'm gonna take over. Molly O'Neill, I'm married to Ethan. I live at 45 Stone Street in Quincy. We've been there since 2018. I'm also a teacher. I've been teaching in basketball at schools for six years. I'm constantly thinking through a lens of individualized education and accessibility for all. So I just want to talk about how these skills generalize for our Seaside Canines business. Each one of the dogs in our care presents different needs or challenges. And, for example, we have dogs that have separation anxiety, fear of motorcycles, or dogs that simply need a structured pack introduction, introduction in order to feel safe and confident in new environments and with a new hand way, which Ethan is able to do amazing. We're able to meet those needs because we keep a low ratio of dogs to humans. So this is how I want to answer your question. In my experience, excessive barking often occurs because a dog's needs are not being met. So we currently have a daily routine that we adhere to. We ensure all dogs are being socialized and stimulated physically, emotionally, mentally. And with the combination of all of our enrichment activities, we find that we're able to be proactive and caring for these dogs. And therefore, they're less likely to demonstrate these unwanted behaviors, like you mentioned, barking, crying, things like that. We're also planning on installing noise cancelling insulation in order to mitigate noise inside. And then the vinyl fence will also mitigate noise outside. We also plan on minimizing the amount of dogs outside at one time just in order to prevent any excessive noise from occurring.
And, you know, it might sound weird or stupid, I notice a question. You know, dogs like kids, and you get a bad one. Is there a time when a dog causes too many problems? And you just say, I can't take this dog anymore?
We do tell them to test all of the dogs in our care. That means we're doing a structured introduction. That means we're making sure that they do well with all of the dogs that are already activated pack members, as well as the people that are working with the dogs. Have we turned dogs away? Absolutely.
Yes. All right, I mean, you know.
But...
Once in a while, I'll be at the park or something, just because I'm driving to there. And I'll see a dog, you know, just flip out, stuff. Going after our dogs. I mean, his, his day was to go get enough dogs.
Maybe they didn't have enough enrichment that day, Mark.
Hey. So you're talking about the noise cancelling. Where is that gonna go?
So that will be on the interior, in the insulation. Go ahead.
No, what room?
All of the rooms.
Oh, good.
We're gutting the place, so.
Nice.
Yes.
So Friday is done? Make a number of Friday's.
They will meet as soon as that lease is signed.
No, no French fries.
No French fries.
No doggy treats.
Our dogs won't be happy with no French fries.
Doggy treats.
Any questions?
Yes, so provided if you didn't do overnight, what are the general hours of your business going to be?
Our business hours would be 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That would be when clients would be dropping off or picking up their dogs.
Yeah.
However, with the overnights, it really would be just the dogs, again, that are sleeping over. The employer or employees, depending on the ratio of dogs that are staying there. It would be stacked 24/7. We're not gonna let dogs go out for playtime at midnight. You know, if it's, they need an emergency bathroom trip, you know, we're, we walk them on a leash, et cetera. We're really only anticipating playtime during our, our core business hours.
What are you looking at for like mass number of dogs? Do you have, you figured that out based on space yet?
Twenty-five. And that is the same amount that was approved for the pet sitting business in Marina Bay.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I had for that.
So how many dogs would stay over? I'll do the math.
Maximum of twenty-five.
Okay.
If everyone needed...
Right, that, that would be very rare.
That's what I was saying.
I just want to understand your fencing. So it looks like you have a six-foot-high plastic Brooklyn fence.
Correct.
Surrounds the driving closure.
Correct.
And beyond that, you also have a wood fence that is on the block line. Sorry, on the side?
I believe...
Where that plate belongs to the neighboring property. Property, yeah.
And there is an existing chain link fence on the property line.
And they did put a ten-foot set back on each side of the fence as well, so that'll help with...
So will the whole back area of the building be asphalt or will be grass there or something?
Uh, we're gonna keep it the asphalt. We're gonna kind of clean it up as far as grass goes. We have turf rolls that we're able, it's not gonna be permanently installed. Turf is certainly, if you break up, clean and sanitize, swap out turf clean ones. Questions?
Okay.
And as far as like shots and all that, do you expect to make sure everything has...
Do we require... Yep.
I, I, I don't know, I don't own a dog.
No, these are great questions.
I had a dog once, he got my old one. Some guy named Matt Yakin killed him. I killed my old dog. Never had another dog. Went to say goodbye, and he pushed me back, and he ran, and the paw got caught underneath my collar. I said, I don't deserve a dog anymore. Poor guy, just wanted to kiss goodbye. You gotta...
I don't want to do it.
Yeah, that was sad. I figured I'm, I'm no good with animals. All right. Now, all my friends got injured, and now I'll talk about it. My daughter was like seven hundred and forty bucks. She went on a trip, right? Oh, man, seven hundred and forty bucks. Well, I'm offering my house, seven hundred and forty bucks a week.
There's definitely a need for it.
No, there is, there's a big need for it, for so many people. Because like I said, I got a lot of calls, a lot to talk about. And I didn't think it would. I thought it would be a lot of people against it, but we haven't gotten that, so we'll find out.
We require a release September and four to sell the vaccinations.
Is there any other licensing requirements you guys have to do? Like, did you have to go change your...
The city of Quincy does not have federal ordinances, which is why we're here for the special permit.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Also, okay?
Yeah.
No? Mr. Chairman, whoa.
One last question, great. And forgive the question, my dear, but do you say you're a veteran or a veteran here?
Veteran.
Veteran.
Yeah, taking a mission.
They're a tough act to follow, but very briefly, Molly and Ethan both moved to the pack. They'll be doing extensive renovations to the building, both in the interior and exterior. I know you have copies of the plans. So they're investing, you know, quite a bit of money into this project, particularly for something that they don't own. And so I think, I think what they'll be doing will be an improvement, not only to the property itself, but to the surrounding properties. They'll be taking a building, I'm sure you all know, that's a little bit rundown at the moment, as I may say. And so with their investment in, in the property, I think it's gonna be quite an improvement, not only to that building, but as I said, to the neighborhood in general. I know you have copies of the letters. They, they got several letters of support from folks, many of whom are here tonight to voice their support. So with that, Mr. Chairman, unless the members have any more questions of need, I'll sit down and you can ask for the other folks.
I just had one thrown in. Oh, the lease?
Yes.
How long is the lease for?
A five-year term.
And, uh, I just wanted to see how they were protecting the rest of all the money.
Yeah. There's, you know, there's an element of risk associated with...
To buy, right at the end, yeah.
Right, right.
Thank you, Councilor.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in council? You want to speak first, any one of us?
Yeah, sure. David Caffey, 112 Lee Whitney Road. Dog killed. Ethan and I have had various conversations over the past several months. The first one is when they said they were at 45 Stoughton, and they had over a hundred clients. And I know when Molly was talking about being mobile. They do a lot of picking up and taking care of the dogs so that they're out and about a little bit. But having over a hundred clients down Housneck on 45 Stoughton and getting no complaints was impressive to me because I usually get a phone call, and not one. I know there's a lot of people here that have emailed me and people that are here this evening that are in need of this. I can't think of another one. Maybe there's another place, a kennel in Quincy, but a dog grooming, you know. You know, maybe one or two or whatever. But down in that area, I think it's, it'd be a good, a good deal for everybody. A lot of folks that have dogs down that area, when I mentioned what was going into Harry's, they had no idea, and they were excited because they were gonna utilize Ethan and Molly a little bit here. And the lease issue, as I think would be the number one priority, is something that possibly we can build in a little bit. And I know Robin is, is crewing a special services, maybe can do some spot checks. But as I said before, on, on 45 Stoughton and, and the whole deal with the dogs down, down in the neck and in the area, no calls, a pretty stealth operation that I think that they ever handled one. So, but I'd love to see inspection services just put it on their, uh, check it list on their radar a little bit. I know that I got one call from a neighbor, couple houses over. That concerns about the noise. And we totally understand it. And I think we'll, we'll find out, we'll keep an eye on it and get our arms around if it's an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor?
If you guys don't mind, just light up here, you know, state support. Name and address.
I'm in support, we're all set.
I was just a screw bit, so.
Why?
You're a cat guy.
We're cat cats.
Hi, my name is Teresa DeBona. I'm at 22th Street, Quincy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of a public hearing. I was not given the same opportunity, but for them, I am very excited to hear that there's gonna be a business, a dog business in our area. We need more business services, and I'm really excited for that. So I give them our support. I'm, I'm glad it's in our condos and what heart makes, or anything like that. So I wish you guys really good luck, and I'm really glad that you're gonna be in the area as a business.
Thank you, Mr. Le.
Hi, everyone, I'm David DeBona from 22th Street. Also for this business. I am also self-employed, so trust me, I get what it takes to try to make something work and put your neck out there. So again, I just wanted to support these two for taking the dive into it. It's another, it's a major undertaking.
Thank you, Mr. Le.
My name is also David Le, but I do it by 10th Street. And I am definitely in favor of this. And the reason why I am in favor of this is because we have no adverse reaction in the area as far as parking and anything else that the neighbors in the area. Also, which I believe everybody here is aware, they're right behind the main sewer line that's coming down here from Faneer. And they will definitely, definitely not have any adverse conditions to add any more problems to our main sewer line. I am definitely in favor of this.
Thank you.
Amy, I'm in my monitor for the community. I am very in favor. I've been sending my dog to Seaside Canines for two and a half years. They are extremely reliable and trustworthy. It is really hard to find someone to trust with basically your baby. So, very, very favored.
Thank you.
My name's Andrew Nizaro. I live on 171 Bad Park Street. I've been a client for the last two years. Ethan and Molly do a great job with all the dogs. They've really helped my dog with some behavioral issues. I kind of worked through, you know, socializing her with other dogs. So I can't thank them enough for taking her while I'm at work and my wife's at work. And it'd just be a great, great opportunity for the neighbor.
Thank you.
How you doing? Nate Marcheski, 162 Flonewell Drive. My wife and I have been taking our dogs to Molly and Ethan for the last two and a half, three years. Just can't say enough good things about them. They're great. The dogs are well-looked after, trust them completely. They love going over there. To speak on kind of what Ethan had said about, you know, different hours and stuff. I'm a lineman for National Grid in Quincy, so I work some pretty wild hours sometimes. And to have these guys to look after the dogs and I know they're taken care of is just, just huge, really. And I can't say enough good things about them, and we'll support their request for the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Hi, Randy Hoes, 50 Russell Park, Quincy. We've been using the service for over a year. And we just find it very responsible and, and great to work with. So we hope it becomes a business and continues to have success. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi there, Kaylee McKee on 132 Rockland Street. We've been sending our dog to Molly and Ethan for the past three years. Everyone kind of covered it. They are absolutely the best. It's very hard to find trust within someone with your pet. And they're always there for everyone. Sometimes I think my dog's not gonna come home because they like them more than they like their own damn owners. But they really are the best people, and I could not be any more in favor for this.
Thank you.
Ralph Fisher, 981 C Street. My wife and I, we've been taking Blaze, not Tarble, to, to Ethan and Molly's at least three years now. I mean, soon as I found out. They are extremely good with, with, with dogs. I mean, taught, uh, one of the things I kept hearing about was the noise issue. One of the things you, you learn is the fact that when dogs are in a nice, social and comfortable environment, they're not noisy. You know, you hear dogs barking when people walk by with their dogs or something like that. Yeah, there's that barrier of frustration. When you have, dogs are social creatures, and they like each other's company. And therefore, they're generally very quiet. You rarely ever get a lot of noise. And the fact that they have an overnight system of business is how God sent. I mean, what, you know, not too long ago, we took a trip to, to Scotland, and it was about two weeks, and they had Blaze there for two weeks, and not a problem. He loves them, he loves their friend, he loves the friends that he gets to play with. They are absolutely, I, I can't recommend them more. They're just amazing folks, and I hope, oh, and another good thing, it's nice to have a business there. Last thing Quincy needs is another empty storefront.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Hi, everyone, I'm Catherine Cox. I live at nine Grant Place in Dorchester. Just wanted to echo everything everyone said. My rescue was beaten and left in a park. And just to talk to their behavioral health, Phil Teere, they are, he's obsessed with Ethan and Molly. They're such amazing people. I don't have a huge support system, and they're always there to help. And I drive over into the Plaza Bridge from Dorchester and rush our traffic twice a week because I love them so much, so.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Tom Bell, 20 here, I drive in Milton. Not a Quincy resident, but like people from Dorchester, kids from Milton coming to have our dogs come see Molly and Ethan. It's just a testament to what they're, the kind of people they are. And a veteran and a Boston Public School teacher. They are, I swear they are, they're soft in their instincts, too. And my dog is, I'm jealous of them. But my dog is in love with them, doesn't want to come home with it. Thank you.
You guys filming commercials?
Talking about, yeah, at 8:30, you're going to City Hall, and you're all here in line.
This is a man who loves...
Says enough for itself.
You get a dog.
David Jacobs, 10 Trail Street. Don't know Molly and Ethan, but I know people who use them. And I have a elder dog, senior dog, so hopefully I'm probably using... And I have a elder dog, senior dog, so hopefully I'm probably using him now, too. Excited to see a business. I know you're passionate about business down at 101. Everyone here has been good about that, so just glad that this can stay a business.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn, are you in favor?
Of course I'm in favor. Young company. Come to open a business, see an empty storefront open in this, in Mary Street. I live at Bathcock Street. I didn't even know about those down there. So they must run a good business. And if they can give me some lessons, they'll find the dogs.
The dog might kiss you.
How many people are in hope for that? Good luck.
Hi, I'm Liz Henry, 180 Elmore Road in Braintree. We, my husband and I, very enthusiastic about Molly and Ethan's services for the past three years, I think. And to echo everyone else's sentiments, they really are salt of the earth. We personally would do anything for them. I think this showing of people here tonight is a true testament to how wonderful people that they really are. But dogs especially enjoy going to their house. They have a vibrant social media presence that all the dog owners love seeing. And I just can't say enough great things about them. Especially my husband and I do travel frequently. And for those people who don't have kids and would consider their pet to be their child, having somebody dependable that you can leave your pet with is really worth all money in the world.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Winnie Turner, to cry. I'm so happy for the both of you. My dog, 213.
Name and address?
Oh, sorry. Julie Gibbons, 27th Bathcock Street. Fortunately, we're neighbors and they have a dog business. And my dog has suffered from trauma and abuse and he was a project and Molly and Ethan drastically helped me with that. I traveled for a year straight for work and without them, I wouldn't have been able to proceed in my career because he would stay with them for months at a time. And he's really come a long way. We've been, my dog's been going to them for five years, a little over five years. So I think they'll be an asset to the community, being their neighbor, same thing, the noise with the dogs, never hear them. You can hear kids playing ball, Louboutin Park, but you can't hear the dogs ever. My sister also buds them and there's never been a complaint.
Those house net kids alarm though.
They are. But there's never been any noise complaints or traffic or any issues. I think they'd be a great asset to the community. They already are. And I'm all for them.
Thank you so much for coming here and waiting. Councilor.
I'm back. This is much better because I can tell you've already, you can actually get a dog because they can help socialize. And maybe you can give a couple of tips on how to try it out.
He's got to take away his license.
But then actually, I'm very in support of this. As a dog owner and knowing how hard it is, with COVID, a lot of people bought dogs and they didn't have any place to bring them to when they went back to work, no different than childcare. It's very difficult for people to be able to make sure their dogs are being socialized and extremely hard when you actually go away because you do want to leave those animals behind that are being cared for. And what better situation to have than to have Harry's become a dog. You know, it is, and I'm so glad I won't be up here to actually.
Twenty seven unit.
For part, for twenty seven years. So this is, I welcome you to the community. I know it's very emotional and I really do appreciate you coming and expanding and putting an investment into property services. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope it's longer than that.
Yeah. Buy it.
I think I'm the last one. Jess Jordan, 1233 C Street, C. I just want to come up and show my support and sure there's more that wanted to be here as well to show their support. We've been bringing our dog, Frank, down to a social worker at a Boston hospital that works overnight. So it is nice to know that my dog goes to a daycare that has the ability to stay overnight if I couldn't find care for them.
Thank you so much.
I wanted to show you a picture that there's my dog in the middle and the other two dogs, actually, the other two dogs, their moms and dads, mine's in the middle in the backseat. And Balki is actually driving.
I've got a bottle of wine.
So I wanted to share how special, they send out pictures and they actually do calendars as well, too, to support the Quincy Animal Shelter. So they don't allow the dogs to really drive, but I figured I should. My name is Kim Reed and I live at 481 C Street. And when I came to Quincy, I bought my home in, I think, eight years ago. And it was a joy to find them when I had purchased my new dog. She was a rescue dog. And they are a joy. And just like the other parents all said, my dog thinks she is gifted because she has two homes. She gets to go back and forth between each one. But they, they're absolutely wonderful to promote Quincy business and also, like I said, supporting the Quincy Animal Shelter. They also, you know, do calendars with all the dogs in them. DeeDee was February, she's always in the pink month, so I am totally 100% in favor of them taking over that location, just a short distance from me. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. It's a tribute to these two, but you know, we're gonna need a park before we get out of here. And we all came here and spent the time for the people that are taking care of your families.
I think I want to say my kids there.
Reform, all I hear is, you know, like, behavior like a lot of those.
I know. I've learned so much about dogs.
Don't kill another one.
No, I'm not. Okay, I haven't had an animal since that day. And then something happened. A friend of mine bought a cat. I think he needed a cat, he needs a cat. I goes, I want a cat. He's not a mean cat. It's gonna be a cat, it's a man comb. She goes, it's gonna be six feet long. I'm like, what? She goes, yeah, he's like eight months old and he's three and a half feet. And I'm looking at him going, wait, he's like a dog. Oh, he's a dog. And his roost for it, they told me, is between three and four. And I go, that's like three years old? Because he's that big and he sits in the roost for it? Like, he's gonna be following you? I cannot. I thought he was getting a little kitty. Anyway. It's a testament, really, to who's down there. I'm impressed. Makes a lot of impression here because they're here all the time, but these people really went out of their way. He must be doing something really super focused. I really want to ask if anyone's against this because they might not get out.
I want to speak in favor.
Might not get out.
Keep going, I'm just speaking one night. But I gotta get on the record. I come to these meetings all the time and I have never seen so many people come out in support of something because most people. And a lot of the times, you feel bad coming to these meetings. You guys must feel bad being on the board sometimes on so many decisions, but this makes you feel good about being a resident of the city of Quincy. So, you know, I want to thank everyone for coming. And I also want to just recommend to the board, if you know so many people are in favor of something, move this agenda to the first item.
We didn't know, John.
Dunn, I really thought if I.
I didn't know what was going on either.
I thought, half these people probably don't like these things. Don't want a dog.
Well, I mean, we've seen many things. It seems like.
Let it play out.
People like dogs better than the children because we've seen. No, no, the only other time, there's a lot of adult daycare centers or there's the child and people that have their kids at the daycare center. And I don't even have a dog. I have cats, but if I had a dog, I would love to burn some guys, so I don't even think it's a child.
Then they can't talk.
They should get a property.
No, it's 8:30.
But anyway, thank you.
I was trying to see my kids.
No.
No.
Close her on the side.
But I'm in favor.
All right. Last call. Call if I'm getting close. No, there's a DPW. Wow. Another kid. We reviewed the project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed right this side? First of all. Second call. Third call. Councilor, come on, this guy here.
He wants to do one floor, right?
You all saying anything else?
I let off.
Why not? You want to wrap it up?
No, it's free.
Getting late.
I think a lot of those in favor, they said that was probably okay. So we'll go through it and just note.
I don't even want to say it, but I have to. There's one proposition letter here.
Susan Dyer, 421 C Street, Quincy, strongly opposed. Main concerns are noise always are operation negative to the resale of property. My dog, that dog daycare residence overnight accommodations will inevitably generate a significant amount of noise and parking. Furthermore, I'm concerned that it will negatively impact the sale or resale of my property.
All the hearing forums. Last call. You made your last call opposed. Okay. Call on opposed. Any more to say?
Mr. Chairman, DBA 23-20, very determined for a special permit to operate a dog daycare with the option for overnight accommodations on the premise 405 C Street. Quincy make a motion to grant a special permit.
Second?
Enthusiastically.
Are the motions in and all in favor? Aye. Again? Aye.
Aye. See, I was going to say you need the bigger building in three weeks.
Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much.
Thank you. Give me a minute to clear out. You almost said, "Councilor"? Wait, anxious sleep?
Got to eat those pillow molasses though.
Just checking on 113, is that closed? Or are you continuing? I don't know. I don't think that. All right, just checking. I don't want to have to bother Kathy over here and see, I don't want to have to bother and see if it's closed, public hearing or not. But public comments closed, right? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Kathy. 113. Right on the tonight's agenda.
Hey, guys. We got one more here, if you don't mind. DBA 23-21. Thank you.
Ann McDermott for special permit, variance binding, demolish existing two family homes and construct a four-story, six-unit residential on 59 and 61. Counselor Yara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for hearing our matter of duty. I do represent the applicant, which is Spear Flat, LLC. Ann McDermott, who's the manager of Spear Flat, since he's here on this evening as well. Jim Burke is our engineer from the Selberg South of Quincy. Alita Alba, Chu and Company Architects of Quincy. So 59 Spear Street. My client is proposing a doggy daycare.
Yay!
I wish that couple the best of luck. It's great to see that support. I love that level of support.
That's a big question for what they've done.
So 59 Spear Street consists of a lot size of 7,736 square feet roughly in a business C zoning district. It's currently improved by two family residents. This is, we all know Spear Street. This is located on a block that has really received a lot of attention over the last few years because of its proximity to downtown, obviously, and public access as well. This board has seen some other proposals of this particular property as well, larger as far as number of units were proposed and what and is proposing here. So the proposal before this board this evening, which is designed by Chu and Company Architects of Quincy, is to demolish the existing two-family residence and construct one four-story building containing six residential flats, so two units on each of those floors. This proposal will accommodate parking under the building for 10 parking spaces, which is what is required in business C for the residential use. These residential units will consist of all two bedrooms, again, two units on each floor. And I will point out, the existing two-family now sits pretty well at just one side of the property, leaving a five-foot setback right now. This new proposed building will be centered. We're going to provide, you know, 10-foot setback on one side and the front as well, as well as 12 feet behind. A little bit shy on one side and that particular side of the property on the other side adjacent to the Bank of Canton parking lot. So I think this was designed in a way. Ann knows Spear Street really well. He's owned this property for a while. He knows the difficulties on Spear Street. So again, as I've told this board before with projects and people that I represent, we always like to approach this by first assessment of neighborhood. You know, can this street, you know, support parking at all? You know, here, you know, we did not think so, you know. So that was so important was to approach this, providing that necessary parking for these six units. There's a real mismatch of properties on Spear Street. There had been, there may still be rooming houses. There's three families, two families, four families as well. There's a 20-unit apartment building next door. Many of these properties can't support, can't support a great deal of parking, you know, for their individual uses, so that's part of the problem, you know. So we looked at that, too, and we want to provide parking for our proposal there, which we've done. For instance, the parking, the building next door is a 20-unit apartment building built, you know, many years ago, and I understand, with no parking, you know. So obviously, that's a concern there. Again, the team is here, so I'm going to have Jim Burke, who was our engineer. It's important for me to point out, and sometimes I belabor this a little bit, but it's important for this board to know that because of this project being the six units, we were, we have been before the planning board for site plan review. This board entirely knows it's a very, very thorough review process. There was a very new consultant that was hired, obviously all the city departments. Alie Rule is our city traffic engineer. She looked at these things. We began this with a proposed seven unit. We had 12 parking spaces underneath as well. Ms. Rule really didn't care for two of the spaces and we listened. We listened to the neighbors, we listened to Board Counselor McCarthy as well, and we did, you know, we did drop that one unit down to six. Fits even better. We opened up the parking a little bit better for site circulation and things of that nature and we still provide the top spaces. Dave has been great. We did have a neighborhood meeting some time ago because site plan review went on for a few months as well. Very little attendance, you know, at the neighborhood meeting, unfortunately. I always like to have as many people, you know, so it was at the school, excuse me, at the planning building. There were maybe a half a dozen people that were there. You know, we tried to, you know, understand their concerns and answer what we could at that time. So we received site plan approval from this planning board for the city of Quincy and obviously this is our next step here. So without further ado, I'm going to have Jim Burke just give a quick presentation as well. And Alita Alba will give a little bit on the aftermath.
What about the starters and the other shit?
Yeah, so we were, I was, my officer notified from the Quincy Police Department, you know, and Ann has really sealed that up. There was nobody in the home. It was just, it was in that shed. Yeah, that's been sealed up.
When?
Just desperate people.
That was today.
Today.
It was today.
It was today.
I was saying it was.
Yeah, we were just notified recently by an officer of the Quincy Police Department.
They even had shelves and set up a little bit, like a kitchen area.
Yeah. Yep. So, so that's, that's been taken care of.
Thanks.
Uh, but let me have Jim Burke give a, a quick presentation to you all.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, uh, gentlemen and ladies, uh, my name is Jim Burke, uh, with Selberg Solid, offices there in Quincy, and, uh, we've been working on this job for quite a while, we, we actually did original design, um, back in, I think, two thousand nineteen or so. Uh, but, uh, what we should have is a single, single building with ten parking spaces underneath. Uh, we did listen to the neighbors when they granted concern with a retaining wall, which we, uh, recreated, got rid of that. We did go back and forth quite a bit with, uh, the peer review, and, uh, we've got a final letter from them saying everything's, uh, pretty good. We've got, um, as far as water supply goes, we've got a configuration that is preferred by, uh, Quincy engineering, which is a, a six-inch vein, reduced down to a four for fire, and then tapped off with a two-inch for domestic service. Uh, gravity sore, uh, coming off, uh, and connecting to utilities in the street. Uh, the drainage is, uh, is incredibly robust, one of the comments we got back from peer review is that they wanted to do some water quality, uh, so we've got a water, a proprietary water quality collection system, uh, mostly for, you know, it's a, it's a covered, uh, parking lot, uh, and it also goes into a, a totally large potential structure, uh, thirty-four by four by four concrete honeycomb leasing alleys, I'm sure you've seen them, hang on the edges of the road, but, uh, in the three-by-ten configuration represented by that dashed-out square in the center of the building. Soil's up there, uh, sanding gravel, we did some actual soil testing on there, that, that soil information is on the plans, and there's a few secondary review as well. Just want to add, if you have any questions, you'd like to answer.
No, I'm just trying to get two more parking spaces.
We had to, and, uh, it was difficult, uh, it was a difficult configuration.
They all two-bedroom units?
Yeah.
They're all two-bedroom units?
Yes.
Two-bedroom units?
Yes.
Any questions?
Look, this isn't the special permit, Spear Street isn't?
One, one point five.
Is required? Yeah. But they're not part of the special permit? Like, like Spear Street isn't there? Is it right on the edge?
Downtown?
I could, I can answer your question, so, I was gonna, I was gonna answer after they, they presented. So obviously we're here for a reason, you know?
Yeah, hands on water.
Business C or something?
So, bit, business C, uh, does allow for residential use, uh, but we're here requesting a special permit, uh, in a business C district for that residential use.
Okay.
You know, uh, variance's request are very minimal, you know, just set the front, front and, and so one of the side setbacks, um, but front is only really a half a foot, you know, the other is five feet, you know, so very minimal.
But Spear, so where, where's the downtown redevelopment? Is it cut off at Washington?
Yeah, um.
Must cut off at Washington.
I don't know exactly where that line is, uh, but, but pretty, yeah, pretty close.
It's right there.
It is right there, you know, it is, it is downtown.
It shouldn't be in the Washington.
Um, yeah, I know, uh, we say it's owned in a different way, but, but again, this, this site is only so big as well, you know, it can only support so much. We feel what was proposed here is very reasonable. Again, minimal, uh, variance is a request here, special permit for the residential use. Binding, because this is technically an expansion of, of a non-conforming, uh, building, you know, because of setbacks and things, so request the binding, you know, for this as well. And I think the binding is, is a little easier because it's, it's not certain, certainly not substantially more detrimental, you know, we're providing parking, which we're improving, as Jim indicated, the stormwater management, you know, uh, from, from the, for the site as well. And then providing, um, much-needed, uh, much-needed housing, uh, which I think, you know, all the stuff there. I know there's a lot, you know, but there's, there's, there's residential housing needed, you know, in every sort of way.
Nine thousand books, is it? What, what's the number of units?
Three thousand residents down in, in the city of Boston, in thirty grounds enough in the city.
Yeah.
You just keep stealing?
No, but it's, it's like, you know, it's like nine thousand units.
I got, I got. They keep selling them?
No, but you just can't get out, you can't get out, once you're here, you won't be able to get out.
And that's, that's not here, I mean, this is a very small, uh.
No one uses that street.
Consider, I mean, no, and, no, I don't, I don't think for traffic purposes, there's much used, people that live there.
The Tuffin Street.
It, it may be, in, in some respect, uh.
No, it really ain't.
I think. New coming.
Yeah, to come in and off the other street, that's right there with handout in one of them cars.
Great turn all year, you come out of there, so.
But it says, if you look at it, it says you can turn left.
Really?
Did you want to hear some architects?
Yeah, I really, I really do.
Okay.
So I'm still looking for two spaces.
This is Alita Elba, um, from Chu.
Name and address for the record, please. I'll keep telling what the building may, uh.
This proposed project consists of six residential units with ten parking spaces underneath. Here we have the driveway, and we have parking spaces on, on both sides of the property, and, uh, on the front, we have a lobby with the egress here, and then, uh, second means of egress in the back, and we also have, um, literally make the first floor of units addressable. So this is like a bird's eye view from above, um, that's the present footprint above, parking underneath. So this is the first floor of the residential unit, um, which is above the garage, we have one unit on the left side and, um, the other unit on the right side. Both units are two-bedroom units, two bathrooms, um, the square footage, uh, varies from seventeen hundred sixty-seven square feet on this side to a thousand, um, forty-nine square feet for this unit. On the third floor, uh, it's similar to below, um, the unit on the left side, twelve hundred seventy-four square feet, the unit on the right side is, uh, eleven hundred seventy-one square feet, they're all two-bedroom, two-bathrooms. And the upper units have, um, decks on the front and back, and, um, this unit also has some decks, some outdoor space. So the, uh, the fourth floor is identical to the third floor, same two, two bedrooms, two baths, and decks from the back. And here we have the front elevation, um, um, we have a mensard on the top floor to give a more, uh, residential look, uh, with dormers, and, um, the material.
The side, what is, what is up top?
So this is a mensard on the top with architecture shingles, and then we have dormers. Uh, the siding on the main, um, the other two floors is fiberglass lopsiding, orange view. And here is obviously the parking underneath the building. This is the big view, um, same idea with the mensard, dormers, and, um, the lopsiding on the exterior.
Yeah, how you put it?
Yeah, fiberglass. Orange, orange view. So this is, um, the left side elevation, um, same idea, same materials, double-handled doors, more residential look, and that's the parking space underneath. And this is the other side, pretty similar to the left side. So here we have, uh, rendering, uh, this is the proposed building, and that's the building next door, um, looking, um, east, and, uh, this is looking west on the other directions, and that's the proposed building, and that's the brick building next to us, and that's the rest of the street view. And this is just on all views on all sides, rendering of the building. Any questions?
Yeah, uh, no, not about the building, I just got a question about the, the parking space. How are you assigning any parking space since it's on the park?
Yes, uh, so there's, there's going to, obviously the condominium docks will, will really control that, you know?
I don't, that's the value of it. If you buy a unit, you don't get an automatic one space, and then the rest might be bidden, I, I don't know, but you mean to tell me you buy a unit there, you don't get a space?
You would get a, you would get a deed of space if you, if you want it.
Is it extra?
If you want it.
Is it extra?
Uh, I, I don't think we've gotten into that great detail if it is extra.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I go, because if someone's going to sell a condo, and then you're going to start selling parking spaces.
Yeah, likely, likely.
Like, just me, I'm letting you know, you just, you never finish for me, I could finish myself, I swear, I can, counselor. So, if, if you can't give me an answer, I won't be voting in favor.
There'd be one deed of space per unit, yes.
And then? That's automatically goes with the price?
That's her.
You're saying that's done?
Yep.
I know what happened in a few places around here, it bothered me, that there was like eighteen spaces, so many units, and then all of a sudden I hear you can buy this space for three grand a year, like, what are you talking about? This is bizarre. It's all in part of this building. So, and, it wasn't good, it's happened a couple times.
Oh, and I've done some projects where, uh, the mixed-use component, uh, adds another, another layer.
Exactly.
And for those particular projects, there's really a full, you need a real full, uh, parking management plan, you know, to control that, so I have that before, I mean, before this board.
We should know before we go vote on anything, whether you buy a condo, you don't even get a parking.
You get, you, you would, you would get a space, correct, yes. Yep. Uh, I mean, that's, that's a no-brainer, that has to be.
No, it really ain't. It happened, it already happened a couple times in the city.
Yeah, no, that has, that has to be the case where the, you know, uh, one, one per unit, um.
I had split up a half, you know?
And then, you know, if some, if a, if a unit wanted, if someone purchasing a unit wanted a second space.
Oh, God.
Then you might, you know, charge for, for the second space, yes, yeah.
Any questions?
The garage, will it be covered with door or just be open?
It's open.
It's going to be open so people can walk in through the street?
It's open, yes.
Have you considered having a garage door?
I guess the planning board did not suggest having a garage door, sometimes they don't like that because of these, like, traffic is coming in, like, people have to wait here for the garage door, and another project didn't like that, so then they request the door.
Who do they, who has to wait for the garage?
Well, they were concerned that if there's, like, people driving in, that they're going to wait here for the garage door, and they stop there, the traffic coming in on the street, then, yeah.
You know, we revoked the full, you know, open the door before they actually.
Right, yeah, it was never brought up, uh, to have that.
Never brought up.
Uh, on the side of each, um, again, it's open, um, but we, we took into consideration, um, the Campbell's building next door, the power building, you know, so we tried to provide as much landscape, and that's why we have a ten-foot setback on that side, provide as much landscape between those two properties, as much as we could.
They actually did request we make the driveway twenty-two feet wide, because we have a twenty-foot wide driveway, and they request a wide.
So either twenty, twenty-two feet wide, yeah.
As, as an architect, just want your opinion, do you think the building would look better with a garage door or without?
Well, if you have a garage door, then you kind of have to enclose it, because then it looks, like, kind of weird, have the door, and then all open on both sides, it's, like, kind of out of place, I think.
I guess I'm looking at the rock elevation, I'm just looking at.
From the back. Because both sides are open.
They do that, your house, they do that, that doesn't matter.
For security purposes, and, uh, keeping. Press, actually, building out there, it's going to have to be some manual. Management on the side. Not outside, the six units, you know, obviously, uh, but the condominiums comes trustees, you know, unit owners will be the trustees, so.
Relying on cameras, I guess?
Uh, I'm sure, like, anywhere is, there's some surveillance as well, you know?
I, I just think that covered parking looks better than open floor.
I agree, but if it's all enclosed, I agree, yeah.
And your question on, on additional spaces, so, that's the only thing the traffic engineer really brought up, uh, with respect, was more, was more site circulation. You know, it wasn't a, a, an issue of parking, a concern with parking for that number of units, it was more site circulation. Uh, so it was actually these, so these two spaces here, which is in the back, uh, of the site, uh, those are the ones we're going to get. So that's when we came down on the number of units as well, at the same time, to be able to accommodate the ten spaces.
You know, you, you don't even have an extra space for guests.
Uh, well, we do, well, based on, well, based on the one and a half, that's, that's nine spaces for six units.
How much, yeah, one. No one's going to buy them unless they need them, so.
Uh, but, you know, with respect to the other dimensional requirements, you know, it's five hundred square feet per unit, you know, for.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I think it's all in terms of change, I mean, if we're going to build these buildings, we, we have to have two condos, we don't, we should be building, that's just my.
I, I understand.
You got to get guys off the street, and I know there's people here saying, don't, don't let them park on the street, are you kidding me?
And, and no experience, that's, that's what we've done, you know, and that's how, that's how, that's how we approach it, yeah.
Any other questions, still running?
Good, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First of all, second call, Mr. Dunn?
First of all, second call, Mr. Dunn? Thank you for the address I'm going to do. One twenty-two Mayor's, Thomas J McGrath Highway, I'll actually be in the butter of this project. I'm an equity owner in one twenty-two Mayor McGrath, I support this, I know there's been other proposals brought before the board for this particular property, I think it was a halfway house or something, but this gets a blighted piece of property cleaned up, I understand my these concerns about parking, it's a one-way, it's, it's two-way up into the bank, parking lot, and it turns to a one-way. Since the city implemented that, there's been a great slowdown in traffic on that street. But, uh, I think it'd be a great improvement, and, uh, I wish the developer good luck. Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call, third call, I'm, I'm getting close, I want to hear from the. We, we have reviewed, uh, I don't know, we have reviewed and provided comments to this project to the planning board, all comments provided have been addressed. We do not have any more at this time. Is there anyone who has homes burned aside, old or undecided, first call, second call. Come up, name and address for the record.
My name's Stan Campbell. I own the building, um, right next door, fifty-three to fifty-seven Spear Street. This lot here, um, I'm all for developing it, um, it's been a nice one, the halfway house wasn't the greatest thing either. But the, they, they, these folks keep saying that they are parking under the building, they don't have parking under the building. The reason that they are parking is because they push their parking right up on top of their lot, and they're allowed to do that, okay? They, they have building setback, building setback, for, for that high building, it's supposed to be ten feet, they just violated the five feet line. All the, they have a choice, they can drop the building lower, and then they can go up to five feet, they think they're out all the way around. But no, they want to keep a high building, and they want to push out, they don't meet their setbacks at all, they're, if you keep making them go inside.
That's why they're here.
Right. And so, that's why I'm here.
Right.
So if you push them back to what they're supposed to have, uh, on the parking setbacks, then they will get eight cars there. Whether it's eight cars or not, it's a five unit, I'm not really complaining about the five or six, I'm complaining about them, you don't allow them to park their cars headlights right up, you know, facing my building, two feet away. The, uh, Spear Street has twelve, uh, parking spaces on the whole street. I have, my building has no, no parking, you know, my building is right on its lot line. That was, if you say that was a presence, maybe it was a presence, but that building was built when none of us were alive, and there were no cars, so.
Yeah.
Maybe they, we can, by now figure that the hostless buggy might be around for a while, so, um, the, I think it's, it's ridiculous how, how congested that street is, you know, and I wish I get parking, I wish I could get parking, or buy parking.
I, I mean, I asked him, I mean, if there's any lights shining buildings, it has to, they have to put some protection up there, so it don't have.
There's a fence on that side.
How high?
Uh, probably a six-foot fence.
And it might be eight, I don't know, because it's, you know, we still get that reflection a lot though.
Yeah, absolutely put that into consideration, well, no one cars, and, and pull them into those particular spaces, right, right at this.
So it's a six-foot fence, you're going, you're going to put it in. So it's a six-foot fence, you're gonna, you're gonna put it in now?
Yep.
And, and I, and I don't understand at all how the justification is, because of the property on the other side is owned by a bank parking lot currently. We should, we have to do five feet, why, why, why five feet? Just go up, go ten feet, and then even though, you wanna drop lower, build me a five then. Uh, the, you know, it's unfair to, whether it's the bank property or my property, when you violate the setbacks, you take away from my property, you take away from their property. I mean, I always wanna be a bank.
But they're trying to increase the value of your apartment, I know what you're saying, I know, I know, thanks.
Well, you know, parking end up for the parking.
Anyway, so. Oh, it's going up to a parking, right. They're gonna give a parking.
They went out about closer to that side, because.
It is.
I mean, even more.
I mean, oh, it don't bother me, it's in five feet, it is.
Four feet, cut it in half, I mean, like.
So move the building, you're saying, towards then, I don't know, I mean, what are you, I thought it was on that side.
It is.
Five feet on that side, right?
Five feet on the bank side.
On a bank side, ten feet on yours, correct?
Uh, a little under ten feet.
Well, yeah, it's ten point six is required, and we're at ten.
I'll go at ten, actually, if you're looking for plans, you don't have to.
Well, then the survey is live.
Okay, so the survey is.
Whoa, 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 no, it's, come on, we can't do that.
It's too late.
If you look at the plan, they, they give this setback on the back of their lot is nine foot eight. So I'm gonna give him ten, I guess it's bound enough.
Well, it's, because it's sealed, I guess he has, like, ten feet here and nine foot ten.
Right, so he's short on, he's short on the back.
Hard to look at, it's, it's, it comes back, like, just ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, so anyways, I'll say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed on the side?
I have three seconds, I'm double.
Come on.
Um, Beverly Campbell, uh, please, Eli Wayne, hello. My question is, you talking about, see, my side of the building, so I've got these, they're protruding out, the building is here, the cars are sticking out. They don't have the setback, and we're worried about the setback, the lights being on top of our building, being shining in, that, okay, that's fine, but you know what, now, now you're talking about.
Come on, amazing four spaces, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they're in the parking spaces, they're not sticking out.
They're sticking out from the building?
No.
You're saying, oh, yes, no.
She's talking about, like, you know how, like, the building above is here, and the parking is two feet from it.
But, but you have an eighteen, an eighteen-foot space, it's in a space.
What kind of fence is the six-foot fence for you?
We could do eight.
They're gonna do, um, one of the ten.
So, first of all, you're really close to my building, and with the cars sticking out there, now you're gonna have a six-foot solid white fence. It's gonna be all along my lot line, and it's gonna look like hell.
Well, the, if I just may, the parking lot itself is about two, two and a half feet below the ground next to your property. So parking, you know, your headlights are typically two, two and a half feet off the ground. With the fence and, and the landscaping on that edge, I mean, the parking, the headlights are gonna be pretty low.
And you got a six-foot fence on that side?
You don't need four.
Huh?
You don't need four, really.
Buttons.
I asked you a question, in there, or you have, you got a six-foot fence, huh?
So would you like to be looking or walking past your house and have the next step wall ready? I don't think so.
So what do you want, nothing?
Well, trees.
Give us, give us a clue what you're looking for, I don't know what you're looking for.
What about trees?
Like, ah, the values or something?
Let's look at the landscape plan.
Let's look at that.
There's one, two, three, you got, what, six, six trees in?
Well, is it, that's on, yeah, that's on that side.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
That's without, but, but if you put a fence in, that's not gonna, I mean, yeah, well, you could still put.
Why don't you look at a picture, why don't you look at a.
You could reverse it, put the fence, and then on your side, put, put the trees.
The trees.
Yeah, so do the fence at the end of the driveway.
Right.
Like, at the end, right there.
Well, could you look at a picture here of my building, right next to their building, and see what the fence looks like?
No, it could be inside the trees, where, where it's sitting.
Yes.
Yes, in my building.
And put, put the, put the fence inside the tree.
So put the fence on the inside of the tree.
Right?
Could do that, yeah.
I mean, if fence could go on the inside of the trees, and you're looking at all the trees.
So on your side, it'd be.
And it's gonna hide most of the fence, and it's two feet lower. Wouldn't that be better?
You do that, yeah. Would that be better?
Yes.
All right, so we'll make that, make the note of it, the fence goes on the inside of the tree. All right, come in, let's, let's, everyone hold up here, hold up here, ask us a question, we'll get.
No, you're just.
Oh, oh, I didn't see it, I, I, I thought it was fucking her, I'm going in, I'm checking in, no one can hear what's going on here.
So it's just shy, so it needs to be ten foot six, it's just shy.
The thing is, it's just really up in, up in our face, and I don't know why it's being allowed to be, but besides that, the parking, it's not enough. It's like, we've planned this out with.
I think that too, but the, but the rules are nine spaces and he's given ten. I don't believe it is, I think we should have minimum of two spaces per, per unit, but that ain't the rule, so. If I get something to do and help change the rules, I'm gonna do that.
The whole perimeter going around from, like, McGrath to Newville, yeah, I forget that, there's no parking on any of that. The only parking in that whole block is Spear Street, and you can't park down by, um, the other buildings, and you can't park all the way up. You can't park all the way up by the church.
Between Spear and.
So what you can do.
Y L C A, I, I parked on the side over there once.
So, it, what you can do is come down Spear Street, you have exactly.
Francis, that's it.
Francis, thank you, is exactly twelve spots.
On Francis?
Oh, on Spear.
No, I, I thought he owns the house, and I parked in front of his house. I just thought it was a side where it's parking.
Well, so you don't get chicken.
No, but he's inside, he's inside with his cars off the street, he's got two, two driveways, he's got.
So now, so part of twelve spot, twelve, part of twelve spots is right along here, and that's because that building's a mess, and nobody parks there, and nobody lives there. So once you take away, once you start filling this in, and we can reduce it more.
No, they'll tell. No, you got a, you got a driveway coming in, you still can park on the street in front of the building, okay?
Technically.
Okay, one else, they don't know him. They don't know.
There's a driveway, there's a driveway near, there now.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so.
Some, some side of the home is not in the middle, but it's just still.
It's also gonna have another spot out front and a spot in back.
It's not what you need.
You definitely taking some parking space together.
Head back on board, yeah.
Yeah, I know, all right, what other questions do we have? I don't know. So, I understand they want the fence on the inside, they don't want the building, I understand that part, and, uh, you want the fence on the inside of the tree. If anyone else opposed or undecided?
Okay, okay. I'm Josephine Aliberty, you've seen me before, yeah, so I'm like. I'm Josephine Aliberty.
Okay.
And I live at sixteen, um, I yell straight Quincy, but I have properties on Spear Street.
Yeah.
Two historical places, okay, that's been my whole thing. I know nothing's gonna happen, but I, I wanna make it known. That's a historical district area, you have part of this street two ways, the other part of this street is one way. In front of my building, there's four parking lots I've got. I, I can't park there, they're always taking up, so we do have parking for our, our people there. And when you tell me that people don't need a car, but they live near the, um, T and all that kind of stuff, it doesn't work, people drive past. So that area is totally congested. Spear Street is on both sides, yes, they start roaming home, and maybe they could convert it into a breakfast home someday, who knows, if it was a, a nice area, nice sidewalks, nice lighting, nice trees. We have such a beautiful area right next to the, uh, historical district area. The Church of the Presidents, the Bethany Church, and all I wanna do is build stuff like that, but doesn't go with the architecture of the area. At least if, if you build something, it should at least, you know, reflect the area that is being built. So I know nothing's gonna happen, that's why you don't see people at these places come here, that's why people don't go to meetings, when you have these meetings, and you say, oh, only twelve people, then, nobody's interested. That is not true, people aren't interested in a criminal art in Quincy, and my voice is not gonna be heard, I know, so there.
But it is, if you want some changes on, on the building, they're dying, they don't wanna speak up.
That building, the outside should at least perform with bricks or something that will with the area, or stone.
The historical district ends at Bear Building.
Right.
Why is it in there?
I didn't draw the map.
Well, the houses standing on there now is a historical home.
I am, but, but as far as the city looks from a historical map, I just looked it up, man, and that, it ends.
Well, that's kind of silly.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Well, why don't we change the law? We can't change laws.
I'm not elected.
I'm just saying, I know you guys, I know you guys are probably.
Help them all in, they can help you.
I'm just saying.
Right in this room.
We need to change the zoning law. So we can't with this idiot, please. All right, I said my thing, that, that is honestly how I feel.
I think that.
I have a beautiful pretty building, built way back, it is one of the first. I own the two-family home that.
The two-family that's there is really crazy.
I put all the money in, I didn't ask this city to do it, why did the rest of the area do it? No, they wanna get a, a big building, they get a ton of money, that's it, I put in on the same thing, but I did it because I love Quincy, what good does it do? So that's it, that's my thing.
Thank you, is there anyone else opposed on the side? You can't have more than four things on the agenda, that's the rule, six, we're after change on.
Hi.
That wasn't long, that wasn't long, I mean, it wasn't like.
Joseph Aliberty, and I live in sixteen, are they all street things?
I'm sorry, I was speaking on, naming it.
Joseph Aliberty.
Thank you.
Sixteen, are they all street in Quincy? And, um, I have, I know Spear Street pretty good, and the, the street is real small, it's not a big street. And people park one side, and sometime, somebody stops on the other side, a car can go by.
If you have sidewalks on that street, you couldn't take two cars, it wouldn't fit.
Right, 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 well, if I could.
That's why they drive up in the side.
Yeah. That's my problem, and the building, the building in our, you know, we take the family down, you know, they put it three, four floors, and that's, I don't know, right. Parking is, I'm prepared about parking, because there's no space, and, uh, in traffic. So, there's a problem there, they should look at the street and do something about it, so that they can afford to have a, you know, take it down a house and put a building, I don't know.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
How many units are, do you have on the street?
I have, uh, I have a six in total.
And has, has there been problem renting because of congestion or?
We have a parking inside.
Okay, that fits, for how many?
More than I need.
I was just wondering, I, I was just curious, does that?
Yeah, I, I have just in the back, two, six units.
Okay.
And, uh.
And the two you have stacked, okay.
Does everyone have two parking spaces?
No.
No, you get one?
Well, I'm, I have some cars in parking there, but I don't want them to have parking. When I rent, I say, I give one parking space, because in the winter, because it's a circle, it's harder.
But he's giving one and a half, that's what I'm saying, so everyone in the building has one and a half, so you can only have one, you can't have a half. You gotta bid on the elements, it's gonna be for some of the bid, or the wins, get the best bid you can.
On the six, I can do, I can do one, one and a half, but in the winter, the plow cannot go by, because it's a circle.
Not this one.
Not this one, but we didn't.
Yeah, what happened to all that money?
Savings, savings.
Anyway, anyway, Spear Street, we have to watch, because it's gonna be, after that, it's gonna be much worse the other one.
Yeah.
Everybody's gonna be in some time.
Yeah.
They take it down sometime, and they put a, a bigger one.
Well, the, the historical building, the, the historical district would prevent a lot of that, so.
No, not yet, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else opposed on the side? Come on, Dean, come here.
Dean Jacobs, ten Charles Street, Quincy, Mass. Um, I'm opposed, this, well, I'm undecided about leaning toward the post as far as, you know, I, I share some of the concerns about the parking underneath the structure, you know, we, no one, I know you guys are addressing, no one wants an open, you know, garage. You know, people are just gonna walk through there, I mean, literally, if you sleep on it, someone's walking into your house, you know what I mean? I mean, I see, like, a, a friend of mine runs that drive-in school in North Quincy, right across, and so I, I, I work some hours for him, so I'll be there, like, nine, ten o'clock at night, I'll be getting in my car, and people are just walking underneath, like, from the T. It, it's very unsettling.
They're looking for cars that are unlocked.
Well, they're also, well, they're also doing drugs. But, um, what we're saying is, like, you know, maybe close up a little bit, put some lattice, you know, kind of close that, it, it doesn't look, um, it doesn't look great, but, um, I'm actually, you know, I'm actually opposed to the project, but if it is gonna be built, it needs some, some attention for parking, because that's. All right, my other question is about the, the rent, the, uh, selling of the parking spaces, so each unit's gonna get one, so there's six units, so there's three extra spaces. Four, four, sorry, four extra spaces, so what happens if everybody's like, nah, I'm not gonna go for that extra space, you're just gonna, I mean, once you've sold the whole, the whole building, I mean, you can't just own those four parking spaces.
I think if, if, if they're available, um, you know, I think they'll be available for people to park, though, obviously.
But you will, but what?
Not, but not a deed in space.
But once all the units are sold.
Questions through us, David.
Sure, well, so once all the units are sold.
So you think that they're gonna put, like, online, you can park here for five dollars?
All I'm saying is, no, that's what I'm saying, I'm just saying, once the units are sold, six units are sold, and the six parking spaces that are deeded, when there's four left, does the developer still own those other four parking spaces?
Yeah, yeah, you can give them whatever they want, the association, whoever's gonna do it.
So, yeah, I'm just saying.
Develop, association, well.
Well, I'm just saying, the people should, well, the association.
That's why I wanna make sure everyone gets at least one, so you get a deed in space, and then what, I can rent my, my.
Well, I'm just making sure that there's not gonna be a, a seventh owner, and who just owns four parking spaces.
No, no.
No, okay. Huh?
So it happens, and then they rent them.
It happens, so they're lost in it, I don't think it's gonna happen here.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. That would be a first for me, I know they've charged money for it, because, uh, oh.
For you?
Name and address?
I'm Jeff Heinz, one ninety-seven Allen Street.
Jeff, go ahead, tell us, we.
Couple of questions, um, I just wanna point out that there are, um, Rob, there are single families on the street also.
I just said, I'm sorry, okay.
There's several single families, so that does change the dynamics of the neighborhood. I have a question for the board, Robert, is it possible for a project like this to get, to get built without coming for zoning, that it's supposed to go zoning?
Yeah, and, and shrink the bill, and, and.
No, no, if it's supposed to go zoning, no, 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 how's that, you'd be, unless you, well, if you're in, like, one of these special permitting districts, like, there's one right now downtown, there's one in, uh, Wallaston. So, if you're in a special permitting district, there is, they, they bypass zone schedule.
But if you're just outside, like, this project here.
If you're in this location, there's no way for them.
That's correct, Rob?
Yeah.
Thank you. There was a story last night at Le Monde Quonicle, talking about green space, um, we definitely need more green space in the neighborhood, I'm not even sure how much green space is here. And, you know, as far as, then, I, maybe they said it, but I didn't hear what they said about snowfall and where the snow is gonna go. Is that addressed, did I miss it, I'm not sure.
No, it's, it's, no, it did, because it wasn't safe.
And the, and the parking's under, so there's not a lot exposed.
But the snow getting up to the building, where would that go?
Where the parking is?
Yes.
It'd have to be removed. You know, we have some, uh, snow storage in the rear, we have a twelve-foot setback in the rear. You know, so that's out of our sort of snow farm back there, snow storage, uh, in the rear, it's a twelve foot, I get a twelve-foot setback off, off the driveway, so in the rear.
So is that gonna be clean space or?
It's green, yeah.
So I mean, is it gonna be a designated area to put the snow?
Hey, hey, hey.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Jim. Concern I have about projects like this, we're not against downtown being developed, but like Josephine said, and her husband, it's, it is a historic house, even if it's just outside. That was a Hardwick House, I don't know if people remember way back, the Hardwick Estate where the IHOP was, or where the courthouse was, I don't know if anyone remembers that. The other ones, that was one of their houses over there, and yet, once these houses are gone, they're gone.
Yeah.
And, um, there is some, you know, Quincy says that, this city says it loves history, but we keep tearing these houses down. I mean, it could be a beautiful house if someone wanted to put the money in.
Oh, could be, could be.
Like Josephine and her husband did, they did a great job doing their house though. And, um, you know, it seems like we're going in a different direction now.
Oh, it's the cost of money, you know, you have, that's the problem.
But they did it much longer, yeah.
And it's expensive, it's heavy, and it's all happening.
I understand.
No, that's a...
I, and I understand what you're saying, but we are, we are still a neighborhood, and, you know, they say they're protecting the neighborhoods of Quincy. Well, we're a neighborhood, it's getting ripped apart brick by brick, and...
Well, it's, I mean, that's the way you feel, a lot of people pay to progress, it's people getting in, they wanna live in a major city, and they don't wanna live in Boston, or in Quincy. It's just getting overbuilt, I think.
I, I know, and when you got people that are living...
Downtown, we haven't got those big projects yet, even down here.
And when you've got people that have lived in, you know, families that have been in the same neighborhood since the eighteen hundreds, seven generations in one house, and then they feel like they're getting a squeeze put on them, and so it's tough.
It is tough, it's tough.
And, um, the other issue is, why are we allowing developers to go in and do these kind of projects? But then, when someone puts in for an in-law apartment, they shoot them down. So like, on my street, there's a particular house, has parking for seven cars, it's a two-family. And they look to put an in-law apartment in the attic with dorms, and they were shot down the first night. And yet, we allow these other buildings to be built, it doesn't make sense when we don't take care of the residents that have been there.
Because there are a lot of smaller, smaller houses that were right beside it probably, and that's probably why you go in. It's not like this big giant thing, building with dorms everywhere.
I, I understand.
But once dorm is on, every house on. Hey.
I understand, but for example, on, on Newcombe Street, one of the residents tried building a two-family on the empty lot, they couldn't, they had to withdraw with all prejudice, but then they give permit for a monstrosity, it doesn't make sense. And we, we can't forget the people that...
Because they all wanted dorms on that, remember?
No, I'm talking about on Newcombe Street, when Michael McKenna was trying to build a two-family, with, with the building got built, got the permit, it's not being built now. You know, right, right across from the Y back from it, there was the two houses put together, the Hayes' house where the law firm was. You know what I'm talking about?
Newcombe's right behind. Right behind the what?
Right along my path, yeah.
I don't remember.
And they had like three big projects down there that kinda moved, and they haven't done nothing, they haven't done anything.
I, I, I...
Those things have to be, like, gone anyway, because it's been so long.
I agree, but, but someone tried building a two-family on that lot, and they couldn't build it, someone that lived there.
Well, that'd be a reason.
I, they, they withdrew with all prejudice, they weren't gonna get it, but my point is, let's not forget the people, the people that have been around, you know, we have, um, obviously, historic houses and, um...
Again, Mr. Heinz, but he's doing, he's getting his parking, he's making it, that lighted property a lot nicer, he's moving parts into the bank, so... I'm not, I'm trying to do everything, you know, we cut down to six, I think, I don't know, one time they made nine, I'm kind of...
I, and I understand the accommodations we've made, and there's been a lot of good in the neighborhood too, I'm not saying everything's bad, but what I'm saying is, we got, we can't forget the people that live there.
You're right.
And, and that seems to be, that seems to be the case of what's happening.
I, I kinda, I'm not gonna get in the wrong here with you, sir, I, I adamantly take offense to that. I am second generation in Quincy, I bought my childhood home, I care deeply about the future of this city. I look at every plan and proposal, just like each one of these gentlemen do, on their own time. And I'm sick and tired of people insinuating in propriety by this board.
Right.
And I think, I, I think, excuse me, excuse me?
I'm down.
You're out of line, Brian. I'm not out of line, I'm sick and tired of it, and you're out of line, why don't you leave? I will not, Brian, you're out of line. You, don't, don't tell, excuse me, don't tell me anything, alright? I'm, I'm just sick and tired, and I'm not accusing you, 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 you're asking the general question, I've never seen you here. I'm just sick and tired, every week, week in and week out, these guys are getting their heads kicked in, I'm getting my head kicked in, for doing what we see fit, for doing what we look at in, in every single project, and I'm sick of it. I, I, I am, I'm done after tonight, I'm resigning from this board after tonight, I am so sick of it.
Oh, good point, hey, hey!
Don't be wise, guy.
Knock that off, that was pretty fresh, really.
You're a clown, dude, do something for the city instead of just complaining about it, Brian.
She's got a big mouth.
Alright, whoa, whoa, whoa!
And I appreciate you, dude, I really do, and I appreciate your sentiments, it's just, it's, it's entirely frustrating that we just, we get, there's, there's an insinuation. It, they...
Hey! Outside, both ears.
Doesn't it?
Oh, no!
I just, I just want you to know, sir, sir, I just want you to know, that these gentlemen care as much about the future of your city as you do and the past, and trying to blend every piece of it that we possibly can. We know we need growth, we know we need new growth, we've been, we've been put on this board during a time which our governor said that they wanted the state of Massachusetts to add a hundred thousand housing units in the greater Boston area. Like, we've been put in the most challenging circumstance, and we come in here, week in and week out, on a volunteer basis, and it is just infuriating that people think otherwise, and I, and I don't mean to take that out on you, it's a long night, I apologize. I apologize if you feel attacked, and I'll talk to you outside after, that was not my impression, it wasn't my impression that, that you feel that way. I think you feel the challenges that we have, and, and I've said the, the thing about, I've said the thing about Reza, and taking care of parents, uh, you know, second generation up here numerous times, these guys have heard me say, we need a solution for, you know, for families to age in place, and to be able to do that, so I'm championing some of the same things that you bring up, I, I, and, and I apologize if I came across as aggressive.
It's frustrating, it's interesting, I just get frustrated.
It's been, it's been a long night there, everyone for, but, and you may not see me up here, but we've been up here...
You've been up here a lot, yeah.
Believe me, I don't, believe me, I don't wanna be here tonight either, but I, it's, I'm here because I care about my neighborhood. We're not, we're not making any money on this, everyone else is, a lot of, not you, but a lot of people, whether it's the developer, the lawyers, people making money, we're not making money.
I understand, I feel the same way, my friend.
And, and I appreciate what you're saying, it's just...
But we have a balance, so we have a, we have a land over loan to develop in the city, okay?
I understand.
And I don't own that property, and you don't own that property. And, and, and he's, you know, trying to work with us, and we're trying to work with him, and that's, that's the world in which we all live. Like, none of us are up here developing these properties either.
I, I, I understand that, but we are a residential neighborhood that's been destroyed over the years. And we just keep getting, this wouldn't go on in other neighborhoods in the city. I don't believe it would go on in other neighborhoods, because they protect other neighborhoods in the city. Our neighborhood, just my opinion, for some reason, it, it just gets divided, well, what's, you wanna really get into it? How, in my opinion, my street had three different wards, because instead of, they would never consider even dividing the neck into three different wards, never mind one street. Do you know what I'm saying, so that's, that's all part of the problem.
I get it, I, I said, is this yours?
And, and you're right, right next to downtown.
Is this the councilor with, is this, is this street have four councillors too, you know, like, in a great place, you, we came up here.
And it's no disrespect to anyone, but that's part of, that's part of the problem, and that is, it's, it's, um...
Fix your line in the district.
And I, and I appreciate it.
I get it, I get it, alright.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz, is there anyone else posing on the side? Well, name and address, sir, I can...
Hey, Miss, it's Thomas DeFoe. Um, my name is Neige Sodello, I live at thirty-two Newcombe Street. And my big concern, in every meeting I go to, it's the same concern, it's the traffic. I'm right down the street from Quincy High School, Newcombe Street is a cut through. To get to that and to Spear Street, you need to come up Newcombe Street, go up Francis Ave, and go down Spear Street. Now, what happens if there is a big fire on that end of the street? And there's been fires, fire apparatus there.
I go the other way.
There's fire apparatus there constantly on Spear Street because of one of the rooming houses there, it could be day, day, night, whatever, because I could see it right from my house.
And they're there a lot of the time?
Yeah, whether somebody's having a hot jam, whether it's a fire, but this fire engine's there all the time. And the traffic from quite about seven in the morning until eight o'clock, I can't leave my driveway, because everybody's dropping their kids off to school. From two fif, from two o'clock in the afternoon to three o'clock in the afternoon, you get the same thing. There's been many people that have almost been killed at the end of Newcombe Street trying to cross McGrath Highway. There is not a flashing light, there is yellow sign, and that's it. There are times where I have to leave my house, go up around the YMCA, sit at the lights by the police station to go to the store and shop, when I could've probably walked there quicker. But I take my life in my hands if I do that. So traffic, and adding more, I mean, granted, it's only ten, but you still got those ten people in, on the, up Newcombe Street, up Francis Ave, and either gonna do an illegal turn. And then you have people, oh yeah, they've been U-turns there all the time and go right up Spear Street when they're not supposed to. Then, at four, four-thirty in the afternoon, you've got the traffic coming out of City Hall, you've got the traffic coming out of the Harvard Vanguard Building, and they go right down Spear Street, and they're not supposed to go to that other end. So it's a big concern, traffic, and even in the, the entire city is a big tra- traffic.
Everywhere.
You know, I saw traffic yesterday afternoon at five-thirty, all the way up the ramp by Home Depot.
Well, okay, I went, I went to a darkened den, it took me forty-five minutes to open a house next to the highway, and I was in denim in ten minutes, once I hit the highway.
Right, I mean, it is, it's, it's just a traffic drag.
Now that's where we live.
And they keep saying, oh, people are not gonna own cars, that is proud, I own three cars in traffic, I mean, come on. That's just me.
I, I believe you, I, I, I hate it myself, I hate the traffic, I hate it, flip out. I only, I, I try not to go anywhere at certain times now. Anyone else? Last call?
I'm undecided.
Last call?
Please be quick, John, I am gonna be quick, I'm sorry. Tough night tonight, everybody. Um, John Orfield, YouTube Grandma Road, um, you know, Mr. Rydell, I hope you don't quit the board, okay? You know, I think you're a good member on the board, and I missed you, you did quit. Um, and also, I wanna sort of shout out to Jay Dugger, I think he did a great job when he was here, I'm sure what people are going on, so I'm not afraid to speak about that.
God, he's so... The neighborhood's gone, I won't get beat up.
But, um, this is, this is business C, this area?
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, this is the area, I mean, we've seen the Spear people come up a bunch of times, I actually think, um, Attorney Fleming, out of all your projects, she's one of them. This is one of your better ones, I like this project, and Mr. McDermott has developed a couple of successful projects already. So they have a good developer, good attorney, good plans. It's just a matter of the, the master plan, where people who are living in these areas that, this is the future. So I feel bad when these people are living in, in business C, this is the place where we're becoming the most dense. And we need this new growth to pay for things like new streets, for C walls, to just pay for police, pay for fires, give the teachers the races that they really deserve. So I mean, I know it's tough to, you know, for the people that live in the neighborhood, but I mean, you know, you do have the right, some of the people who were complaining tonight are people who are also renting too. So I mean, it's, it's just, you guys do do a good job, everyone does a good job, I wish we could all just get along, we'll take a Rodney King quote and end it peace.
Okay, if anyone else, last call, qualified here in close, can you speak?
Um, David Cathy Wood, one, Councilor, forty-eight Whitney Road. Uh, just, uh, a comment about Quincy Square, when I bought twenty-five years ago on Whitney Road, I knew Quincy Square was there. I knew the high school was there, I knew where I was moving into, I knew it wasn't the end of the neck, or Adam Shore, or somewhere far out in Squonam, and so I knew we were gonna have activity. I'm in favor of the six units, because I've been dealing with this all the way back to when Boston Properties was trying to push fourteen or twelve in there, along with the sober house conversation that went on. These guys at least have whittled it down to six, I know we talk about parking ten spots, I don't believe you're gonna have ten cars, I think a lot of people that buy a condo there are gonna look at the convenience or walking up to the T and having that ability, they'll probably have a car. But I don't, I, you know, I, I see it, my sister has a condo over in Malden, very similar neighborhood, she doesn't drive. Her spot sits out there empty, she gets the spot, like you were saying, Chairman, it's part of the deal, but anybody parks in there, there's a number of people that they just don't drive. They just hop on the T, they hate the bus, they go to work. I do agree with, um, number Chin on the, on, I do like garage doors too. I, I, I think it does pose an issue where people do end up walking through on, have access in there. I like the idea of the fence and, and EVA vibes or whatever, to muffle the, um, to muffle the headlights on that side, right? But, um, that, that area, as I said, I compare it where I am, and I'm at Sullivan Tire. We're in an area where we know that there's gonna be units put in and zoned for that, we're on the edge of the city, uh, and they're always gonna be looking at that, and, you know, some of the buildings sitting down there, some of the rooming houses and whatever, are probably the buildings you want to disappear and have something go in. Um, you know, but, um, Mr. Fleming and Mr. McDermott, I think have done a good job, you get it down to six. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Right, so to us, um, you know, a, a door ain't a bad idea, it really isn't, it's plain enough. Doesn't matter whether they like it, whether you want it or not, we want it. Was that cleaned up, yeah, because people walk in there, and they grip parking lots, what they do, they go give you shit, and it should happen, so... I think, uh, maybe I left the door, and then we're gonna put the, put the, uh...
Well, if you're gonna put, I mean, if you're gonna do that, you're, you're gonna wanna figure out how to enclose the whole thing on the...
No, I don't think so, at all, why?
Because, why, you're gonna, why are you gonna put a door with, with a side open, man, like, then you could just still walk in there?
Because you, you just, it's gotta be completely different, it's, it's a, it's a mental thing, you just think there's a gate there, and you just, you don't go like...
It's convenient, they have to drop down two feet, they have to go around a fence.
Right, it's just different, it's just different, you know there's something there, there's not a walk in there, that's, that's, whatever you got to start. The second thing we wanted, is we wanted an eight-foot white fence.
Six.
Six foot, six foot.
It's two feet down, right.
It's two feet down, right, in front of the trees, so they'll be on their side, and, and we can kill a headlight and shine off of there. And I thought there could be like five people leaving here tonight, because the kids somewhere down. It might be happening sooner than later, anyway, maybe you don't in favor, it don't change.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor with the, uh...
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm in favor, I like the idea of putting the fence in, and putting the, the bushes on the opposite side, the other apartment building, I'm also in favor of putting a garage door in.
Thank you.
Don't make a curve, I'm sorry.
Have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, ZBA twenty-three dash thirty-one, Ian McDermott, for a special permit variance finding to demolish the existing two-family home and construct a four-story, six-unit residential building with parking under the building on the premise number fifty-nine sixty-one. Spear Street, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the special permit variance finding.
Second.
Uh, with the fence inside?
With the fence on the inside of any landscaping, and then outside, exterior garage.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, stand in and all favor?
Aye.
Post, come on. Motion, Jim, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, all set.